Board of Adjustment, March 11, 2025. Adequate notice this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:06. Specifically on January 15, 2025, proper notice was sent to The Courier News and The Star Ledger and filed with the clerk at the township at Bridgewater and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 and no new testimony will be taken after 10 p.m. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag. Hi there Nancy, if we can get a roll call please?
Chairman Foose.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
I'm here.
Mrs. Amin.
Yeah.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Fresco.
Here.
Mr. Bonjourneau.
Here.
Mr. Gieske.
Here.
Mr. Seacat.
Here.
Mr. Kulak.
Here.
Mr. Vesio.
Here.
Mr. Gabbit.
Here.
For the record Catherine Sarmat is present, board planner. William Burr, board engineer. Richard Oller, board attorney. You have a quorum, you can proceed.
All right, thank you very much. At this time I'd like to open up the meeting to members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue that is not on our agenda tonight. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that portion. We have no minutes and no resolutions. So with that, we're going to open up our Starbucks case and just to, Mr. Kent Smith, just to let you know, we're going to divvy up the meeting into two portions tonight. You'll get half and then 821 will get half. So, good to see you again, welcome back.
And Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I want to announce-
I'm sorry Rich, go ahead.
So, so if there's anyone in the audience tonight for the Belly Holdings application at 19-21 Mount Pleasant Avenue, that application is not being heard this evening. It instead is being adjourned to May 27th at 7:00 p.m. in this room and there'll be no further notices from the applicant, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're ready.
All right.
Good evening.
All yours.
Henry Kent Smith, Furman Fox Rothschild, on behalf of the applicant, which is Bridgewater Realty, this is the continued hearing on the proposed Starbucks on Route 22 in Morgan Lane. Just to remind everybody, this is now the fifth hearing we've had on this application. We started February of last year, we had a hearing in March, one in May, and one in August. So when we left in August, it was clear to the applicant that there were concerns this board had relative to the Route 22 ingress driveway, the potential for stacking from the drive-through to interfere with the free flow of traffic on Route 22. As a result of those concerns, we went back to our tenant Starbucks and then basically said, if you really want this location, you're going to need to close off that Route 22 ingress driveway. And they have agreed to do that, notwithstanding the fact that the driveway has a DOT permit and is in fact in place on Route 22. So we revised the plans in order to eliminate that access driveway. And in so doing, we now have free flow traffic along Route 22. There are some additional plan changes related to how we reconfigured the site in order to eliminate that driveway. It caused us to go through some internal site design elements, which we have made and submitted to the board in December. We were going to be heard in January, unfortunately our notice didn't get published in the paper in time, so that brought us to this hearing this month. And so to continue this hearing tonight, I have Mr. Moschello, who will testify on the plan changes from a site plan design perspective. I also have Elizabeth Dolan, she will be testifying on traffic and she has evaluated the plans in light of the removal of the Route 22 driveway access. And then Michael Tobia, who is our professional planner. Given the time issues, you know, we'll see how far we get. Mr. Chairman, I believe that's an hour and a half that I would have.
About 90 minutes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, looking like 8:35-ish.
Okay.
Like, you know, I'm not going to cut you off the second with the witness, but we're going to try and finish up and-
No, I understand.
-split it into two.
I just need to know my pace.
This is good pace, I'm good with this.
So without any further ado, Mr. Moschello, if you would please come on up. It's been a while, so let me swear you again. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. And your full name for the record, please?
It's Robert Moschello, M-O-S-C-H-E-L-L-O, and my business address is 265 Main Street, Gladstone, New Jersey.
So, Mr. Moschello, at the request of the applicant, in response to the concerns raised by the board, you did prepare a revised site plan that has been submitted. Could you just identify that for the board?
That is correct.
Yeah, just identify the plan.
Yes, and so what I have this evening is a rendered version of that site plan. For the record, it is entitled Site Plan Rendering. The original date was February 27, 2024, and it's been revised through March 11, 2025. And for the record, I believe this is a-
I'm up to 8:10. Yes.
8:10.
8:10, and would you put today's date on it too, please?
Okay, excellent. So utilizing this plan, just want to give everyone an overview of this property really quickly. Again, we have the Route 22 in the east-west direction on the bottom of the page. Morgan Lane is on the east side of the plan, going up and down direction or north-south direction on the plan. You've got the Starbucks property here, which is the, I'll say, the highlighted portion of the plan. And then of course you have the Stone House Tavern, Tap House Tavern Restaurant, that's now open, I believe, or close to being open, and then the proposed hotel in the rear. So from the last meeting to now, we have made some modifications to the site plan, focusing number one, on removing the entrance that was on Route 22. So that's now been taken off the plan, it's no longer shown here. And we'll close off that entrance that was basically constructed as part of the DOT permit. And we've relocated a entrance for the Starbucks on Morgan Lane, essentially where the existing driveway on Morgan Lane is today. It's a write-in only, there's no exit here, it's only a write-in from Morgan Lane. So if you're coming down Route 22 and you were to go past the end, the main entrance to the property, that's, oh, that's located where my pointer is here on the west side of the site, you'll continue down and make the right-hand turn onto Morgan Lane and then a right into the, into the property. And then once you get to this intersection, you can make a left or you can make a right, there'll be signage there directing you accordingly to, into the site and whether you wish to park your car in the existing part, in the proposed parking spaces, or go into the drive-through lane, which now we've taken, which was originally a two-lane drive-through, and we've narrowed it down to a single drive-through lane with a bypass because we have the internal circulation now. So basically that drive-through lane can hold between 15 and 16 cars from the pickup window, back through, past the menu board, and down through the stacking lane until it gets to the intersection with the internal driveway. I say 15 to 16, depending on the size of the vehicles. Once you get past that intersection, you do have internal stacking within the property itself, you can at least hold another 15 to 16 cars, depending on which direction those cars stack into that intersection. So you're back up to almost 30, 35 cars that could be stacked internal to the site and still allow for circulation around the, around the property. We also modified the parking lot configuration. We took some parking spaces that were on the south side of the lot here by the entrance coming in off of the Morgan, the Morgan Lane entry, and we took those spaces and we moved them internal next to the Starbucks building by shrinking down the size of the canopy that was on the building. We also reduced the number of outdoor seats from 40 down to 16. By doing this, we were able to put nine parking spaces right next to the building for patrons to park there to access the building directly. We still have the spaces in front, which are the ADA, and the pickup spaces that we had previously for, for people who were just running in to pick up a online order. So they're still in the front, and then we have some additional parking on, on the east side as well. We actually went from 33 spaces down to 31 spaces in this, in this configuration that you see here. So we lost two spaces, but given the required number of spaces for the Starbucks, this, which is I believe 13, this is more than adequate from an onsite parking perspective. We also reduced the overall lot coverage. We went from 60.7, which was on the prior plan, down to 60.4 because of the slight reduction in impervious coverage by eliminating one of the drive-through lanes and consolidating some of the impervious in the parking area. We also took the Starbucks building and moved it back 10 feet. So we were originally asking for a variance of 119.4 feet for setback variance from Route 22. That number is now 129.4 feet by moving the building back 10 feet further away from Route 22. In terms of stormwater management, we did modify the front basin because we got rid of the driver, the drive lane that was coming in and just modified its volume slightly. It still has more than adequate volume to handle the impervious surfaces that are being proposed here, so there's no, so there's really no change from stormwater management or site grading or site utilities. In terms of, in terms of loading and deliveries, that remains unchanged based on what we presented previously. The trash enclosure's still in the back and we have the bypass lane for delivery trucks that can be used. And again, based on the testimony, deliveries are in the late evening or early, early morning hours when the building is closed, so there should be no issues with conflicts there. The signage, as far as the signage on the building and drive-through signage, all that remains unchanged, except now because we have the single-lane drive-through with the internal stacking, we've eliminated the signalization system we originally had for the red light, green light, open, closed for drive-through. Now it'll just function like a standard drive-through where there's no sign that would close the drive-through if it was full with 16 cars in it, they would just queue out onto the internal driveway if that was the situation. And then lastly, in terms of one of our design waivers for lighting, we did slightly reduce the overall foot candles. We were asking for a waiver for 2.4, 2.4 foot candles for the overall parking levels. That went down slightly to 2.2 just due to the reconfiguration of the impervious surfaces on the site, but it just, that went down slightly. Just want to point that out for the board. And I believe that covers the majority of the site plan modifications that we made.
So- Two foot candles is still a waiver?
Still a design waiver, correct.
Yeah, I think it's 1.5 is the standard.
Yes, it is.
So just one last thing then, Mr. Moschello, relative to the changes that you've made, that does not impact in any way your stormwater management?
That is correct.
And by eliminating the two parking spaces up by the entrance that comes off of the Morgan Lane driveway, you've added some additional landscaping?
We have added additional landscaping in the southern area of the site here by eliminating those parking spaces.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions from Mr. Moschello.
I know Mr. Wiley does, I have a couple. So I was out there, I parked in the Stone Tavern today, and there's a fire hydrant and a utility pole that's to be moved, it says on the plans. So I'm assuming you're going to lose about those six parking spaces. I'm just curious, was that reflected in the last plan as well?
Yeah, that's, that's right, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, that was reflected in the calculation.
And the spots to the north, they're shaded on the plans, you're going to lose those also, and those were also reflected in the last plan?
No, these, these are, these spaces are all staying along the, along the limit here.
On the Stone Tavern side?
Yes. Stone Tavern.
On the northern side, near the hotel, you had them shaded on one of the sheets, and I want to make sure those parking spaces are still in play?
Well, there's parking spaces there now that are going to get modified when the hotel gets built.
Right, okay.
So yeah, so there will be parking, if you're looking at the Stone Tavern, you've got the loading area behind it, there will still be parking behind it, but it'll be when it gets reconfigured with the, with the hotel.
I just want to make sure that we're not forcing this project out of compliance with the original planning board-
No, we're not, we're still over by, I think, almost like 30 parking spaces.
That's my question, all right, thank you.
I have, I have a question about how, how do the customers leave? Can you show us the-
They have a couple different options for leaving. Whether you come out of the drive-through or you're going to leave your parking space, we have signage to generally, and this was added on the plans, to generally direct everyone, if they want to go 287, we have signage to direct them around the property back to the exit on 22. So if they come, if they come out of the, where the parking spaces or the drive-through, if they want to get to 22, they can go this way to go out, or if they're in the parking spaces, they can either come around this way or they can go, you know, around through the site if they want to get to 287. If they're just going back to 22, they can also go out the Morgan Lane driveway to make that right onto 22. But they have that option or they can come, come this way. But there's, there's additional signage to direct patrons, once they're, once they're finished, to get back out to Route 22 or 287.
So onto Morgan Lane, people can make a left turn from the property?
People can make from this Morgan Lane existing entrance that's there today, they can make a left turn to go down Morgan Lane. It's, it's, it's a no right turn going out there.
No right turn, okay.
This is only an entry-in, they cannot exit here.
Mr. Moschello, what can we do to make people not turn right there, besides you stationing a police officer 24/7?
We have made a mod, a minor modification to the curb line here to increase the height of the curb there. So this way it would deter someone from making that turn, but there's, unfortunately, you can't make it perfect, that if you're in a passenger vehicle, you can probably still make that maneuver, but we are trying to deter them with signage and adding additional curbing to prevent them from making that right here.
That's in addition to what's there right now.
That's correct.
In other words, we're going to make it even more-
Make it more, more pronounced.
It's very easy to turn right there.
Oh, and under existing conditions, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
Yeah.
We're pulling this out another, I'll say, three and a half feet, give or take, and then making it more of a pronounced curb there.
Like a real curb.
Any chance of a solar lit sign on your property, no right turn, something lit, you know, with a solar panel on it, just with a light, just something that, we don't want people to turn right there.
Yeah, we could actually do one with a little blinking light.
I'm not an expert, maybe we can work with our planner?
Yeah, yeah.
Come up with something.
The answer's yes.
I don't want to create any more foot candles, but I also want to really create a situation where if you turn right here, you're going to get a ticket.
The answer's yes.
Maybe have the statute underneath it, you know, 126-4-whatever-it-is, lit, solar panel on the top, so it's always lit, always flashing.
Yes.
I mean, I'm kind of at a loss, maybe the board can come up with a better idea. And just for sake of clarification, the curb cut, because I turned into the lot today, it's already there. Your new entrance is already on the property, there's a little bit of cement, there's a pad there.
You're talking about this one right here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is a curb cut there today, yes.
And it's the same one you're proposing?
Yes, you just can't, yeah, hopefully you didn't pull in onto the-
I had a Jeep, so I, no, I went in on the grass and I was-
You could pull in on the grass, but most people in a car shouldn't be doing that.
I just wanted to know, because I was trying to measure in terms of safety where I saw people turning, okay, thank you.
Yes, that entrance is there today.
All right. Any board ideas on how to get people to not turn right?
You got to put a sign up that says no right turn.
That's what we were talking about, we can make it, we can put flashing lights so people don't ignore it and put the code, you know, you'll get a ticket under this code if you do this. So yeah, we'll certainly work with your, your staff, Mr. Chairman, and members of-
I mean, how do we stop caffeinated teenagers from turning right?
We'll do what we can do, make best efforts to make sure that people don't turn right there.
I think the signage is good as a permanent method to maintain that.
No red light, green light signs.
No red light, green light.
All right.
But what I would say is when they are, if this is approved and they do have a grand opening, probably for the first few weeks, is actually have a police officer enforce it, because if people get tickets when they do it, they're not going to do it again. So that's a way to kind of measure behavior, ticket it, and then hopefully it will, you know, taper off and then stop.
You like that idea?
I like that idea, yes.
Regarding the signage, you, you're, you're kind of directing people more to the rear there in front of the Hilton. My only concern with that is you're going to kind of force behavior to kind of go that way, they're going to see an exit there, they're going to kind of use that, you know, first exit they see most potentially. Why, why are you showing this, kind of trying to direct traffic to exit through the rear in front of the Hilton versus coming, you know, in the front of the property?
We have the sign here to tell them to go to 287, they can, they can go this way.
Okay, that's fine.
But if someone makes the right-hand turn, I wanted to put a sign here to say, to 287-
Okay, I understood you were explaining that the signage was going to direct people primarily to the rear, then around in front of the Hilton, then towards 22.
Only if they turn to the right coming out of the drive-through. If they turn left, the sign's going to say, 287, go to the main driveway and turn there.
If they're at the drive-through here and they make, they see the sign's going to say, 287, this way.
That way, okay.
If someone inadvertently makes a right, I have a sign here that says, 287, go this way, just in case they, they miss it the first time.
We're truly trying to get everyone to move towards the existing main driveway.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I'm just trying, I want to understand like how we're going to influence behaviors to kind of stay more to the front, because that'll, that'll direct them more directly to an exit?
That's why we're putting the sign there.
Okay, then I'm, I'm fine with that, thank you.
I mean, you could theoretically get everybody out through the Stone Tavern.
That's correct.
Nothing's stopping that.
I mean, that's something Catherine, you know, I just want to keep people off Morgan Lane, and you know, not even just not making a right, I just would like to take everybody out, the Stone Tavern exit, get them back on the 22, just because they have more time to react to the crazy 287 merger.
Unfortunately, that, I believe that that curb cut was proposed as part of the overall plan, right? So we'd have to enforce it even if and when the hotel is built, the same with the patrons from Stone Tavern.
Right.
Right? So it's not just this application, so we need to, I think there has to be a conscientious effort, like I said, about enforcement of that. It can't just be put up the sign and hope it does its job. I think maybe a stipulation that if it becomes an issue, that they have to pay for the, you know, the traffic cop to be there for a short period and intermittently as it becomes an issue to re-up it.
I think that's, it's a good issue. We've had this, and I've seen this happen with towns with Chick-fil-A in particular, they, you know, have a plan and Chick-fil-A ends up ruining the neighborhood and the town shuts it down. So I, I think we need some sort of relief mechanism if people start to overload Morgan Lane, Mr. Kent Smith, that we have to come back and, and talk about this. What do you propose?
No, I, I understand. To me, I have to talk to the client, but I have done this on other applications where we proffered to compensate a off-duty Bridgewater police officer to stand guard, so to speak. I mean, I've done this on other applications.
Okay.
I don't have the authority right now to say, yeah, we'll pay. We've got to discuss-
Yep.
What's the compensation, all that, but it's typically an off-duty Bridgewater police officer that we would station there.
I, I don't think we're going to finish tonight, so why don't we work on that stipulation? We'll come back for the final meeting, we'll, we'll put that in, and you know, I think that's a, a good solution to kind of a rough problem. You know, because I want the neighborhood to understand, we're, we're working to keep Morgan Lane like it is now.
We just do not want to detract from the obligations and responsibilities of the police department, so it's got to be an off-duty officer.
The, the problem is we're 35 square miles, it's a big town.
Yeah.
But I love the fact that the, you know, some officers are going to get some overtime, this might be a good way to, to attack it and, you know, fix a problem. So you'll work with Catherine and with Rich on that stipulation?
Yes.
Great.
Would you be able to illustrate for me and for the audience, somebody coming in from Route 22, how they come in off Morgan Lane and the circulation they would follow if they're going through the drive-through? And then similarly, if they were coming in through the Stone Tavern entrance, how they would integrate themselves into the drive-through lanes?
There's three ways to come in.
Hmm, okay.
So if they come in off of 22, they make the right into the site here, they'll come to this intersection and there's a sign that's going to be able to direct them to the left, to the drive-through. And we're actually going to add, you see these chevrons on the plan? Those are going to be painted on the ground. So there's typical Starbucks chevrons for their drive-through, so people will realize that, that that's the way to travel down the front of the Stone Tavern and they'll make a right into the drive-through.
Okay.
If they come in, let's say they miss the entrance, they come in, they'll take that, I'll say the off-ramp or the slight turn lane here and make that right turn onto Morgan Lane, and they'll come in the entrance here and they'll be directed, same thing, drive-through, make a right, they'll follow the chevrons around and they'll enter into the drive-through.
And when you have two people arriving roughly at the same time, one is making a left, one is making a right into the drive-through, is that fair to say?
Typically, well, this one will be in the right lane, turning in a right, they have the right of way, and this one, this car will have to just wait to make the turn.
Okay.
But there should be minimal interaction here, that should be relatively easy to do, you know, in terms of vehicle interaction in the parking lot, they'll be driving slow enough to do that. If they happen to miss this entrance as well, so now they've missed the two of them and they, they realize, oh, I still want to get my coffee, they can come in this entrance here-
Yes.
And we have signage that can take them around either the backside here to the drive-through, or they can also follow the signage into the parking lot here and come around to the drive-through. So they have that third option to come through this way.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Will there be a sign that tells them there's an entrance from Morgan Lane?
There's no proposed sign here from Morgan Lane. The entrance sign is actually, I shouldn't say entrance sign, the identification sign is out on Route 22, but by the time they get to this point, you can see the Starbucks, you come around the turn here, you could, you could see the entrance. We don't feel the need to have a fourth sign along the road to identify the entrance. You'll see the building and you'll see the site from there.
So the Starbucks sign will be after the entrance on 22?
The Starbucks sign is after the first entrance.
There won't be any Starbucks sign there, so-
There's an existing billboard sign there now that does have a placard that may end up getting a Starbucks plaque on it, it's an, it's an empty space on the identification sign, but we are still proposing an additional sign here in front of the Starbucks building on the plan.
You're seeing the Morgan Lane entrance as the primary entrance to the Starbucks, is that safe to say?
No, we're actually-
Preferred?
Quite frankly, I mean, again, depending on traffic distribution, I don't want to get into the traffic engineer's testimony on how that would work. You've got two main entrances, actually you have three, the 22 and the two on Morgan Lane, and it just depends on which way, which one the customer decides to use. I would think, my own opinion would be, they would probably come in 22 first, once they get used to it being there, for some customers.
Yeah.
But there's no one pri, I wouldn't call any one a primary entrance, they're all-
Well, the signage would kind of lend itself to, you know, if you're not familiar with it, and the, and this, you know, the primary, large sign is after that entrance, right on 22, and Morgan Lane's going to be the one most commonly used by people that weren't there for the-
Correct, they would, first-time visitors would probably use the, the Morgan Lane entrance.
All right, any other board questions? Rich, you good?
I'm good.
Board professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few little questions. I think a lot of the, the items that were raised in my report were covered by Mr. Moschello, but I did raise one question about the, the signage, and if you are deferring to the planner, that's fine, I just wanted to address it as far as the site plan. There's, there's three signs, the menu boards essentially, that are not captured within the signage package as far as it relates to the, the actual allowances per the ordinance. So I, I wanted to see how to treat them, I wanted to make sure that if it was a variance that was required, that it gets covered now. You know, one of them is quite large, one of them is almost 30 square feet. I think a pre-menu order board is nine square feet, and then the one with the canopy, I believe it's like nine square feet plus the canopy. So I just want to address those and see if they were, how, how we should treat those.
They're all still proposed, right?
Yes, they are.
So we had originally gone through, gosh, probably the second hearing, we went through the sign package, and our planner, Mr. Toby, is going to go through each of the variances for each of the signs, in terms of planning.
Okay.
We didn't count them, just to Henry's point, we didn't count them as square footage because they were, they were the menu board signs and they weren't identification signs as to the property or directional signs for signage, so you'd only get to them when you get up to the drive-through. So they weren't, they weren't counted in that original square footage number on the plans.
Okay. Again, my concern, and I don't want to eat signage to death when we have limited time, but it's that it's almost, what, like 45 square feet of signage, and it could get out of hand if they ever came back for new signage. What's the limitation there? Is there a limitation? So I'd rather, I think that they're really ground-mounted signs, they're digital ground-mounted signs. Capture them in the signage package in the allowances and address them as if it's a variance, then it's a variance.
Got it.
Based on ground-mounted signage allowance. In a similar vein, that canopy over the ordering point, I don't believe was, the setback was addressed, at least internally to the condo lot, as an accessory structure, but it probably should. And just eyeballing it, it looks like it's like 30, 38 feet or so. I don't think that there's any relief required.
The canopy here, you're talking about this canopy here on the plan?
Correct.
The one in the back, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
But because it's internal to the condo, to the overall lot, I don't believe any actual variance relief for the lot would be required. It's just capturing it as internal to the condo lot on the zoning table.
Okay, yeah, because it fits within the setbacks of the actual property itself.
Correct.
We can identify it, we can identify it on the zoning table.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, just to get it in there.
Okay.
I, for now, I don't think I have anything else for this witness.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Burr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rob, just a couple of questions. The existing, or the proposed building, in no way changes in size, correct?
It's still the same size as before.
The building itself is the same. We talked about the, or you talked about the canopy.
Yes.
Reducing in size for the outside seating.
Correct.
Correct. And that was originally proposed at 40 seats. Now it's down to 16.
That is correct.
Okay. And the prior plan showed two drive aisles. Now you're proposing just one, and the rationale behind that is there's more stacking provided internal on the site, such that you don't need two drive aisles?
That is correct. So the two drive aisles had about 24, 25 cars. Now, because we have the internal drive lanes and not the driveway out to, directly to 22, we can stack at least another 14, 15 cars internally. So we actually get more stacking than having the double drive-through lane.
And there's no longer a need for the drive aisle indicator light, the on, the open-closed light?
That's correct.
That's off the...
That's off the table now.
Okay.
Just standard signage identifying the drive-through and how to get to it.
Do you know if the fire official reviewed this latest plan and was satisfied?
He did. His only comment was about an FDC connection, but the building under, from what the architect testified to, said it doesn't require a sprinkler system per code, so we wouldn't have an FDC connection.
Okay. But in terms of the layout?
Yeah, he didn't have any other comments.
He had no further comments.
No further comments, yeah. Because him and I, I spoke with him a while ago about the access around the building. He was satisfied with that.
We heard your testimony that stormwater does not change. Lot coverage, though, decreases slightly.
That's correct.
Going to go back into your memory bank for a second. Do you remember what the coverage, the approved coverage was as part of the original site plan?
I believe it was 60.8%.
60.8. Your prior plan was 60.7. Now you're at 60.4?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
We're only talking, you know, maybe 1,000, 1,200 square feet in total, but it does bring that percentage down.
But the point being is you're lower now than you were at the prior approval.
Correct.
And the drainage that's proposed is still sufficient, obviously.
That is correct.
For the lower amount of...
With the, actually with the change in the driveway, moving it from 22 to Morgan Lane, we actually picked up slightly more basin volume, like maybe 2%, 3%, because it moved to the, to the high side over here.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Maurice, and I want to introduce the board to Maurice Rashad from Colliers Engineering, our traffic engineer. If you have any questions, now's the time.
No questions at this time. I will wait for the traffic engineer. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you.
One additional question for you before we go on. Would you just cover how if we lost any pedestrian access or how you've addressed pedestrian access in light of the redesign?
So pedestrian connectivity is generally the same as it was before. We have, of course, the sidewalk and patio in front of the Starbucks building. We now actually added these nine spaces to the west of the building, so those spaces and those patrons have direct access to the sidewalk to the front of the building, where we didn't have those before. We still have the sidewalk that goes out the back of the site, across a crosswalk, and then splits in the east and west direction towards the hotel site. So if I want to go to the hotel, I can go to the west, cross the street here, and it'll eventually connect to the hotel sidewalk system. If I want to go out to Morgan Lane, I have two crosswalks that are at the intersection here, and that will take you out to a sidewalk that connects to the existing sidewalk in Morgan Lane. And then there is a small crosswalk here in front of the drive-through for these parking spaces on the east side of the building. That hasn't changed.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We're going to open it up to members of the public that have questions on the testimony you've heard from Mr. Michello. All right, seeing none, we're going to close that portion. Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. My next witness is Elizabeth Dolan. If you would please come up. Dolan, would you raise your right hand to Usam? We swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
And your full name for the record, please?
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N.
Thank you. Ms. Dolan, if you would be so kind as to give the board your professional credentials, including your education licenses held and qualifications relative to prior acceptance as an expert in the area of traffic engineering?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers. I am a licensed professional engineer, registered and in good standing in New Jersey. I'm also licensed in neighboring states. For 39 years, I've focused in the traffic engineering industry and have testified in over 300 municipalities throughout New Jersey and been accepted as an expert in traffic engineering, both representing applicants as well as reviewing applications on behalf of planning and zoning boards. I'm also a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers and American Society of Civil Engineers.
And you've been qualified and accepted as an expert in...
Yes, I have.
Yeah, okay. Is your firm in Martinsville or is it in Somerville?
We're now in Somerville. Well, now, about 10 years it's been. 181 West High Street.
10 years?
I think so.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The board accepts you as a licensed professional traffic engineer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And who's the licensing authority over traffic engineers, Mr. Kent Smith?
So it's the State Board of...
Mr. Kent Smith. All right. Whoever.
It is a licensure under the State Board credentials system. I don't know what the statute number is.
It's, I don't know the statute number. It's the State Board of Professional Engineers and Land Survey.
So it is, it's board engineers?
Yes. Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I specialize in traffic engineering.
So I want to ask this now before testimony because it has nothing to do with anything. It's merely from my education. When something goes wrong and you testify as a traffic engineer, how do boards handle it? How do boards go back to an engineer, whether it's traffic, whether it's a survey, whether it's any sort of engineering? And a traffic engineer makes a proclamation on the record into a microphone and it gets transcribed. How does a board or municipality or state have an ability to go and have a corrective action, to have that board professional that testified, that put their license on the line, that made a mistake theoretically, and this has nothing to do with you? How does a board handle that? How does the municipality handle that?
I think some boards, well, in my experience, some planning and zoning boards have put conditions on applications. Because traffic engineering is not an exact science, we're making projections and estimates of driveway volumes and parking demands. So sometimes we're asked to come back and study the post-occupancy, maybe six or 12 months after a site opens. Count and see if the driveway projections were within a realistic estimate. Check and see if the parking demands were close to what had been estimated. And then, of course, the boards have their own professionals to rely on and review our work. Oftentimes, like in this application, we've got the state level, we had to make submissions, and I'll be testifying to that tonight, or in many applications, the county. So we have those additional layers. But in my experience, to come back and check the projections is something that is written into a resolution.
Mm-hmm. I guess that's it for now. Thank you very much. It was a good answer.
So Ms. Dolan, did you undertake an analysis of the projected traffic impact associated with this proposed development?
Yes, we did. And our latest report is revised December 20, 2024.
And the December 2024 submission and revision to the traffic impact analysis accounts for the plan changes that are before the board tonight?
That is correct. And the board had at that time a different engineering company reviewing the traffic. That was BrightView. So some of the updates to the traffic study had been made to address BrightView's last review for this application.
And just for the record, BrightView, when we had the annual rollover, we appointed Colliers and Maurice, as you can see here.
Correct.
To, I think, both land use boards and Bridgewater.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Dolan, do we need to mark the traffic report as a separate?
We do not.
Okay.
It's in the record.
Okay. Just want to make sure. All right. So Ms. Dolan, did you, in your analysis, just describe to the board what it is you looked at?
Sure. As I said, this was a revised report. It had been revised previously. The initial submission was from April 2024, then we had a July 2024 update. The last and final revision is December 20, 2024. And that latest revision is based on the site plan changes that Mr. Michello just reviewed with you and was generally consistent with the prior versions, but as I said, had been expanded to include additional information that had been requested in the BrightView review letters.
And as part of this analysis, does that include doing counts of traffic on the adjoining road system?
Yes. We had initially performed morning and evening weekday traffic counts at Morgan Lane and Route 22 eastbound. And as part of the BrightView review, they had asked for a Saturday analysis as well. So the traffic counts performed by our office specifically for this application go back to March 2024. We counted from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning. That's the peak period. We isolate the peak hour. And then 4:00 to 6:30 in the evening. And even though Starbucks is more of a morning generator, we did perform the analysis during the evening peak hour as well. And then we updated the counts in June before school ended to capture the Saturday peak period, and that's generally late morning, early evening. So from these traffic counts, we isolated the highest one-hour volumes, and those were recorded from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning on a weekday, 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. weekday. And then the Saturday highest hour counted was from 12 noon to 1:00 p.m.
And then based on that analysis, do you then project the traffic anticipated from this proposed use onto the road system?
That's right. And that's what I was saying earlier. It's not an exact science, but we have the actual counts as the foundation of the report. Those are collected traffic volumes. We isolate the one peak hour. And then we estimate the driveway volumes. And for the Starbucks with drive-through, there's an Institute of Transportation Engineers land use. It's called Coffee/Doughnut Shop with Drive-Thru. And like any of the other land uses in the ITE Trip Generation Manual, the trip rates are based on counts conducted at actual facilities, in this case Starbucks, Tim Hortons, and most notably Dunkin'. And so there's a category without drive-through and with drive-through. The numbers are somewhat comparable, but for our DOT part of this analysis, we are obligated to use these ITE peak hour rates. And using those, we estimate a total of 212 trips during the busiest one hour in the morning. That's 108 in and 104 out. And again, based on the data that's been compiled by ITE and submitted by traffic engineers like our office. So 212 is the morning peak hour, drops down to about 96, 48 in, 48 out during the evening peak hour. And then on Saturday, the peak hour volumes are comparable to what you get in the morning on a weekday, 109 in, 108 out, for a total of 217. So those numbers are the numbers that are presented for trip estimates, driveway volumes that would be expected during the highest peak hour. We combine them with the highest count hours, and that represents a worst case. There's certainly traffic generated before and after 7:00 in the morning, after 8:00 in the morning, and throughout the day, as well as on the weekends. But we're focusing on a combination of peak hour volumes based on actual traffic counts and then peak projections of the busiest driveway hours at the Starbucks. So those are the volumes that were used. And we'll get into some of the DOT stuff in a little while, but for both the report that's been submitted to the board as well as for communication back and forth with DOT about permitting and possible permitting exemptions, those are the numbers that we're using. Some of the ITE data and face-to-face interviews, we've collected such data at convenience-type uses. This is considered a convenience use. They like to locate on busy streets because traffic that's already passing by will be diverted in. And Route 22 is carrying 3,000 to 4,000 vehicles in those busiest peak hours based on our most recent counts, which are down somewhat from prior counts that we had from this location. But there's certainly a good stream of traffic passing by this site. And so many convenience uses, like gas stations, fast food restaurants, convenience stores, they like to be on busy corridors because 50 to 60% at least of the driveway volumes, those 200, you know, 100 in and 100 out, we'll say in round numbers, a lot of that is derived from the traffic flowing past the site. So there's certainly a good volume passing the site. And again, the ITE data would indicate that anywhere from 50 to 66% of the peak hour volume would be drawn from, in this case, the Route 22 traffic passing the site.
Now, just aside, contrast that then to, for example, what is a use permitted in the zone, for example, an office building or a medical office building, or what had been previously approved, a child educational center.
Sure.
Would they create more new trips on the roadway, or are they also just picking people off from the highway?
Well, for the previously approved Goddard School at this location, that would depend upon where the parents are working. And so maybe they would divert to 22 to drop off the children here, but you're going to have that pickup-drop-off in the morning, pickup-drop-off in the evening with comparable volumes. And we had in our study for that 123 total driveway movements for the evening peak hour. For an office use, those, you don't get these, the pass-by trips. Those are destination trips. An office would probably generate lower volumes, but it would be dependent upon the size of the office. The hotel with, that had been approved that still isn't built, 46 peak hour trips. So it's a little bit higher, but the volume is, a lot of it coming from the traffic already passing by the site on Route 22. And eventually, when the hotel is built, there should be some interaction between the restaurants and the hotel. We did run some of those calculations, but an internal credit of only seven trips as a maximum resulted. So really, we're looking at all of these driveway volumes as new to the driveway system and the Morgan Lane intersection at eastbound Route 22.
Then what's your next step of analysis?
So the next step of the analysis is the level of service calculation. And we ran the right turn from Morgan Lane onto eastbound Route 22 as part of our analysis, and we also analyzed the site driveway. And we do a before and after. We take a projection into the future with some background traffic growth compounded over a few years, traffic from the mixed-use development next door. We added that traffic. And then do a before and after analysis of what happens at the adjacent intersection and then what happens at the site driveway. So referring to figures eight, nine of the latest traffic study, we show the levels of service for the peak hours. So I'll start with the morning peak hour. Level of service C, which is right in the middle of the scale, I'm sure the board has heard that testimony about level of service before. That's an average delay on unsignalized of 20 to 35 seconds. So it's C in the morning from Morgan onto eastbound 22 with or without the Starbucks traffic. It's D, which is the 35 to 55 average delay in seconds for the vehicles exiting Route 22. So we have a D in the morning, I'm sorry, D in the evening peak hour with or without the Starbucks traffic. And on the Saturday, because there's less traffic on 22 and on Morgan Lane, we have a level of service B, as in void, for the no build. And then when we add the Starbucks traffic, we add, we go to a level of service C. These are typical levels of service for a highway corridor. Many driveways operate at D and E. DOT won't allow us to get to an F, which is the bottom of the scale, and that's typically when you start to need improvements. So the level of service analysis for the intersection shows only a few added seconds of delay, and that's, again, on average for the vehicles that are at the stop sign waiting to turn onto 22. For the site driveway on 22, the exit, and that's the existing driveway that is right-in, right-out, we've got a C in the morning peak hour, D in the evening peak hour, which is what we got at Morgan Lane, and a C for the Saturday peak hour. The critical movement for the driveway on Morgan Lane would be the left turn exiting. That new driveway that we're proposing is right-in only, that's unimpeded, so that doesn't get a level of service analysis. But the left out has to cross with the traffic two-way on Morgan Lane, but that calculates that level of service A during all of the peak hours analyzed. So the level of service calculation before and after shows the nominal impact to Morgan shows the nominal impact to Morgan Lane. I would point out that consistent with the highway access permitting for the Goddard School, we looked at the split, the distribution of traffic. And I know Mr. Michele took you through some of the signage on-site. We did route the majority of our site traffic out to Morgan Lane. I'm sorry, out to the Route 22 egress directly. And as relates to the I-287 ramp, about 900 feet past that driveway, it's about a 50/50 split. If you take all the volumes we counted, and then you see how much goes onto 287 versus travels through east on 22, it's roughly 50/50. And so we assigned our site traffic that way as well. And so if you want me to get into the D O T permitting as related to all these volumes. Yeah, sure. Right, we did, we looked at that weave. And again, that goes back to the BrightView review. They were interested in the additional traffic that would be using that right-in, right-out driveway in front of the restaurant, and the possible volume that might go over to get to the 287 ramp. So we analyzed that movement as well. And that came out, again, at the low service C or better for that weaving movement. I would point out that it's an existing configuration. I know I handled, and I don't know how many years ago it was, but the access application and the local application for the hotel and Starbucks, I'm sorry, the hotel and the restaurant. And D O T didn't make us do anything at that time. But probably more interesting and important is that before we decided to close the recently constructed driveway on what had been the Goddard site, which is now the Starbucks site, we had filed a request with NJ D O T for a letter of no interest for the Starbucks. And that was granted in October. So more recently, we have been getting D O T's requests for things like weave calculations and analyses, even though there is no need for an access permit. So they did not raise that issue when we filed most recently. And that filing was made at the beginning of August, before we returned, you know, our last hearing here. And then they got back to us in October, saying that no additional analysis was required. So it's an existing condition. We recognize it. It's three lanes. I travel that corridor pretty much every day. And I know how some drivers operate. But in terms of the ability to move over one lane, we've looked at the gaps in all the videos. And of course, I've been there many times. And the formal analysis shows an acceptable level of service for that weave. So at the D O T level, they have been satisfied with what is higher trip generation, of course, associated with the Starbucks, because we had processed the application for the Goddard School. And they did not require any additional permitting or analysis. Now that said, we will now be closing that driveway. So we will be revisiting D O T to get the formal approval to close the driveway that was recently, somewhat recently constructed. That has to be removed, and that can only be done through an access permit process.
So in terms of that, because the board's concern was related to how the drive-through stacking and that entrance off of Route 22 could be in conflict as the drive-through stack potentially would go into the access aisle. It could create a condition in which the Route 22 entering traffic would become in conflict. From your professional experience and your opinion, does the removal of that proposed Route 22 driveway address that concern?
Well, it absolutely does. And I think, and as we pointed out in our report, there's certainly a heightened attention to drive-throughs now because of COVID and what happened during COVID. And I know there were many sites that I would pass by where that drive-through queue would spill out onto the road because it couldn't be contained in the site itself. So we've eliminated that ingress driveway. And so we've eliminated the potential for any queue to spill back out onto 22. As Rob had said, we can get 15 or 16 in the designated drive-through lane. And that's, I think there was some testimony at the last hearing that 9 to 10 is a typical queue at Starbucks. 14 to 15 operationally would be their max. So we've got 15 to 16 in that lane. But then beyond that, if you look to what happens between the drive-through entrance and that existing right-in, right-out driveway that's in front of the restaurant, we can get another 12 to 15 cars there. As you look in the opposite direction, coming in off of what is now the proposed right-turn entrance driveway, we can get about seven cars between the drive-through entrance and that new ingress-only driveway coming in off of Morgan Lane. And if you wrap it around up to where the existing driveway is, that would be, you know, basically in front of the hotel, you can get another seven or eight there. So I think the capacity to queue on-site is well beyond what would ever be expected at this location. But to your point, there would be no spillover onto the roadway system because nobody's going to be waiting in a Starbucks drive-through after 15 vehicles. It's a little longer than some fast food restaurants. And I think it becomes somewhat self-policed. And there's plenty of parking around the entire building. And with mobile app ordering, you know, that's a quick park and walk in, get your order and leave. They can go through the drive-through, but it's a longer wait than is necessary. So I think we've adequately addressed the concern about potential spill-out onto Route 22. There's no way. And even the introduction of the right-in driveway for Morgan Lane, there would be over 20 cars waiting before that driveway would be blocked. So I don't see there being any negative impact with the access design with regard to spillover from the drive-through.
Now, one of the changes that we made, because we removed the access from Route 22, is we were able to add, I believe Mr. Michele testified to nine, additional parking spaces immediately against the building itself. From a traffic design perspective, is that beneficial to the site?
Well, sometimes, I know there's, there have been, in my experience, concerns about people crossing over the drive-through exit lane, which, that's a very common design, and it is incorporated into this plan as well. But those nine spaces are directly adjacent to the west-sided building and the sidewalk system. So they would not be crossing the drive-through. Those folks that park in those spaces, they're walking directly onto the sidewalk and into the building.
And with regard then to the overall site circulation that you've reviewed the site plan, Mr. Michele has testified, would you agree with his testimony that it is designed in a way to handle the loading, the trash removal, et cetera, in a safe and adequate manner?
Safe and adequate, and also, as is typical for these types of facilities. And I know that Rob's office has done the truck circulation tests to make sure that the trash pickup can happen and so forth. But generally, the dimensions on the plan are consistent with recognized design criteria and designed not only to promote safe and efficient circulation, but with visibility throughout the site to clearly see the entrance to the drive-through. There's the bypass of the drive-through, which is a bonus. It's not a must, but it's certainly comfortable. And that I would consider a bonus in terms of the site design. But overall, incorporating the existing access system to serve the Starbucks is a goal of traffic management. And that's certainly D O T's preferences for shared access. So I think we've done a good job by eliminating that ingress driveway that had just been approved and constructed.
So then, to summarize, in your professional opinion, is the proposal before this board tonight, will it have any detrimental impact on the adjoining road system?
No, I don't believe it will. We're taking advantage of the existing site access system. We're closing up the driveway that had been approved recently. We've introduced a right-in-only driveway that gives the Starbucks customers ready access to this portion of the overall development. As I said, that's an unimpeded movement, right turn in. Rob had taken you through the modifications to the existing driveway system to further deter the right turn out onto Morgan Lane. We want it, you know, there's signage, there's the modification of the island and the curb radii. So I think that in addition to following the recognized design criteria, we've cleaned up the site quite a bit. And as I had testified a few minutes ago, I don't see the drive-through queue ever reaching the, either the Morgan Lane or the Route 22 driveways.
I have no further questions from the board. All right, thank you. Board questions, please.
Ms. Dolan, one of the things I'm concerned about is traffic leaving the site and trying to get back on Route 287 southbound. I understand there's going to be signs on-site pointing people to the westerly entrance and exit for 287, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Aren't there going to be some people, especially people after they, if I read that sheet correctly, after they make their pickup, the easiest way for them, that's not where they get their food.
They're going to pick up right here.
Yeah, they're going to, okay, from there.
Yeah.
Wouldn't the easiest way for them, despite the exit to 287 signs, wouldn't the easiest way for them to go back out onto Morgan Lane and make a left on Morgan Lane, and then try to shoot over the Route 22 east traffic to get to the 287 southbound entrance?
I don't, I don't really think so. They're going to, they're going to pick up, they're going to come to the end of the drive-through. And what you're suggesting is they come all the way back up towards the.
No, 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 that's not what I'm suggesting. And maybe I'm misreading the slide. But if they pick up, they travel south a little ways and make a right-hand turn before that, before that, before that.
You can't.
You can't.
You can't? That's a curbed island with landscaping, and then there's a sidewalk crossing. So there's no way you can do that.
So how would they, if they were looking for a way back to 287, and they either didn't see your signs or they decided they were going to ignore them and find their own way, how would they go back to 287?
Well, I think the easiest way, and the sign is here, that they would come back through in front of the restaurant and use the driveway that is existing, the right-in, right-out driveway, because that gives you then 900 feet, as opposed to just shy of 400 feet if you try and merge over from Morgan. So, I mean, I watched a lot of the count videos in addition to being through this corridor all the time. I only saw one vehicle make the merge over from Morgan Lane.
Did they survive that?
It was morning peak hour, too. But when you sit and watch the videos, you do see the gapping that happens. I mean, we talked about the levels of service calculated for that Morgan Lane approach. When you watch the videos, you can see, most of the time, you have one, maybe two cars waiting to get into the 22 flow. The most I ever saw was four. And by the time the fourth one came, the first one was going. So it's, I would think that if somebody is not familiar with the area, maybe they would try to do that. But that's why we have the signage, is to get them over to the west so they have the time to make that lane merge.
In your opinion, is there anything else that could be done to further encourage people to use the westerly entrance exit to get back to 287? Anything else?
I think the signage is really the appropriate means to do that because when you're, when you're leaving the drive-through, you're at a stop point. The sign's right across from you. I would think that a lot of people using this location are going to be commuters and familiar with the area. I think it's someone who may not be as familiar that might try to recirculate. But I do think that it almost, to me, feels like you're going backwards to come down Morgan Lane. But I do, I do feel that the signage is the right thing at this location.
So you don't think there's anything else that could be done to discourage that traffic?
Well, we've already looked at the Morgan Lane movements, and we don't want the traffic going to the residential area, which is, that goes back to the hotel and restaurant application. So the only other, you know, we could, we could put another sign up in this area where the eastern circulation aisle meets the existing drive aisle and put a sign there to head to the right to get to 287.
I mean, I, my fear is that somebody is going to wind up on Morgan Lane trying to make a right-hand turn onto 22 and then cross over three lines of traffic to get onto 287, and they're going to wind up dead. I'm just trying to feel, and if your opinion is there's nothing else that we can do to discourage that, fine. That's your opinion.
Like I said.
So if I could interject, because I just talked to the design engineer, since we are going to be coming back, we are looking at, there is another option, but we can't commit to anything until we actually sit down and draw it out and see how that impacts and get the thumbs up that we can do that. But I hear what the concern is. And I would trust by now, we take everything this board says very seriously. And we will, we've already started noodling what might be able to accomplish the goal that you have stated, which is, don't let them go out that way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I for?
Please.
A suggestion. And it's by no means the only, the only way or the solution. But in listening to Ms. Dolan's traffic testimony, you know, a lot of it is behavior, right? So people learn behavior, so the first time they won't do it again. But you don't want that mistake to be made and anything bad to happen. But one of the things, and this comes up a lot now with technology, is if an application has some restrictions on turn movements, on things like that, sensitive ingress egress to the site is if it is approved, that it would be their responsibility to contact Google or Waze and to basically make it so that if someone plugs it in their GPS exiting the site, it will never take them to the Morgan Lane entrance out.
So if a driver has a waypoint set on 287 south as a destination, we would alert Google and whatever.
It would drive Garmin. The Stone Tavern.
It would make sure that they took the exit, if they're following the directions, out in front of the Stone Tavern. It's a great idea. What do you think, Mr. Kent Smith?
Oh, absolutely.
This is a very good point, by the way. And I want to add to what's been discussed, that the sign that is proposed is a very good sign, is well-placed. However, it is small. The whole sign is 18 inches. And when you're looking at it from, let's say, 30 feet or so, it's very small. And I did some quick calcs. On an 18-inch sign, the lettering height is probably three inches. So what I recommend is to increase the size of that sign so that we can use four- or five-inch lettering on that sign, which actually is the normal type of lettering size used on small roadways. And I'm sure the applicant should be amenable to that recommendation.
That would create another design exception, because as long as you meet uniforms. One more at this point. I, that's, just letting everybody know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maurice.
I have a question on the traffic numbers you have. So I'm looking at the 2026 build traffic volumes. Okay, you have 133 cars turning right onto Morgan Lane and 106 cars, this is the morning, entering the site from Morgan Lane, the Starbucks. Then you have 94 cars exiting by the tavern. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to have 94 cars per hour speeding up to get onto 22 and 287. And then you're going to have 133 cars slowing down. Do you see, I don't, do the level of service consider that sort of, you know, traffic with different, kind of, ones accelerating, ones is decelerating?
It's not so much a level of service issue as it is a D O T design issue. D O T doesn't want any hesitation on their highways. And so the requirement is a minimum of 100 feet of spacing from an intersection to a driveway. And we've got well in excess of that. And now we're taking out that driveway that had been constructed. So there is a natural expectation of crossover or slight weaving as well. But the formal weave analysis with the 287, with the much higher volumes, I mean, at level of service C in the middle of the scale. So this type of configuration would be expected to work acceptably.
So you see no safety concerns of accelerating traffic and decelerating traffic getting onto Morgan Lane?
It happens at driveways and intersections all over. And in fact, if you've got subsequent driveways or driveways closer to intersections, you know, I think about it, you may be waiting to turn left, or, I'm sorry, like in this case, maybe you're waiting to turn right off of Morgan Lane, and you see somebody with their blinker on to turn right. Well, they're going to be a few hundred feet away if they're turning into the existing right-in, right-out driveway, as opposed to what you could have at like an old-fashioned gas station where the driveway is right up at the intersection. And you don't know if somebody's turning onto the street or into that driveway. So this, to me, with the, it's several hundred feet of spacing between Morgan Lane and the driveway. The other thing, too, is that the Starbucks is not busy in the evening when the restaurant would be busy. So you kind of have that good balance, too. You've got more traffic exiting the driveway in the morning because of the Starbucks. But then you don't have the Starbucks addition during the evening peak hour when the restaurant's busier.
And the restaurant, is that a breakfast restaurant as well?
No, no, lunch and dinner.
So it's just, the Starbucks morning traffic would not be competing with the restaurant?
That's correct. So it's a nice complementary use in consideration of the peaking characteristics of this versus the restaurant.
So just my follow-up on that is, we did discuss about the Starbucks sign being closer to Morgan Lane, which would kind of have folks naturally kind of turn onto Morgan Lane. Would it be a safer design if the signage was farther west on 22, such that traffic is taking that right-in, right-out, and, you know, entry?
Would you say, west, more in this area?
That, correct, the right-in, right-out. Would it be a safer design if it was influenced, signage was placed there to direct traffic to try to enter that point? Understanding you do have entries on Morgan Lane, but if it had sign closer west, you know, would you consider that a safer design?
I don't know that it would be safer. I think that this site is visible. It's going to have its identity, not just by a sign, but also the building and so forth. And I do think that a lot of the customers are going to be coming from that traffic already traveling on 22's commuter corridor. And the folks are going to be generally familiar with this. I don't know if perhaps an additional ID sign for. I don't know if perhaps an additional ID sign for the entrance at that location, that might be something more for Rob Michello to address, but I don't see it as being a safety issue because the driveway is there and the, again, the intersection is spaced far enough from that driveway that it exceeds all of the DOT criteria. And again, DOT didn't see a safety issue with this. Through the submission of all the same number crunching that was in our report, that went to DOT for the Starbucks evaluation as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other board questions? All right, I have a few questions. Morgan Lane, what's the speed limit on Morgan Lane?
15.
Would you classify that as a residential road?
Yes.
Can you, and if you can't, we have Catherine that maybe can help us. What are the regulations in Bridgewater on a residential road? Is it even allowed to have access to a commercial site like this?
I can't answer that.
Catherine, any feel for residential roads serving a commercial entity of this size? Is this even allowed under master plan rules?
I mean, this, Mr. Chairman, when we were before another board, albeit, but also on the original application with the Houlihan's and the hotel together...
Right.
Before this site even got on to the map, that driveway had been proposed, approved, and built.
From the planning board.
Right, that they would have jurisdiction over that driveway because it is a municipal roadway.
All right, so let me rephrase. Would you characterize Morgan Lane as a residential road?
Well, certainly to the south of this area, certainly residential. We've got commercial on the 22, we've got the Jiffy Lube across the street, they've got a driveway on Morgan.
Right.
And just, I'll let Catherine speak, but the State Highway Access Management Code does give DOT the authority to require access on a municipal or county road in addition to the state highway access.
That's more my question. So the DOT has basically subverted any master plan allowances that we've made locally?
Yeah, there's a provision in the code that specifically says that DOT has the jurisdiction over access, and I would tell you that in today's DOT world, because this is several years old now, DOT would not allow the restriction that is on that Morgan Lane driveway because, for the very reason we want traffic to distribute, and I understand, because I was here, you know, for that application, we didn't want to have the commercial traffic on the residential road. However, DOT, their operating procedure now would make that full movement so that you don't have to force people to Adamsville to hit 22 that the traffic can distribute. So that's kind of DOT's end of the answer as to what they call alternative access on the side street.
Okay, thank you. That's a good transition to my next question. You know, call it a half mile, three-quarters a mile, Morgan Lane from Route 22 going south to Route 28, would you characterize the majority of the activity as residential on that street? Aside from the Jiffy Lube, would you just mention?
Sure, yeah, right.
Okay, so it's over 90%, we're going to call it residential road?
I mean, I don't know how much traffic, I'll say, cuts through, you know, from the 28 corridor to 22 and vice versa, you know, there's certainly some of that activity.
Just, we're in agreement, it sounds like that this is a 25 mile per hour residential street.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, great. So on page six of your document, basically, you know, you opened up tonight's testimony by, I'll use a quote, "It's not an exact science." So page six, "The software has certain inherent limitations in that it cannot take into consideration that most motorists regularly use the flared shoulder of Route 22 as an acceleration lane to more efficiently merge with traffic onto Route 22."
Sorry, where is this?
I'm on page six of December 20, 2024. Your document. And it says page six at the bottom.
Okay. Oh, I see. The software has certain, yeah, okay, got it, got it.
All right. So what I saw today, and I sat for about an hour in my Jeep, basically parked where your Starbucks is proposed, and I just watched, and every single person that I saw in that 55 minutes to an hour that I was there utilized the shoulder as an acceleration lane. So my question to you is, if the software you use to generate your analysis, this level of service, which frankly seems like a mystery to me, but nonetheless, your software has inherent limitations in it, so how do we truly know that your level of service is C in the morning or your level of service D in the evening, I'm not finished, is accurate being that it is inherently limited in that it cannot take into consideration that most motorists use the flared shoulder?
Right, so that the shoulder is being used for excel, decel.
Right.
And the software you put in the lane configuration.
We've got a lot of laymen here, I'm one of them, so excel, decel, acceleration and deceleration.
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So the software, you input the lane configuration, which across the front edge and across Morgan Lane is three lanes. The middle lane splits to either go to 287 or continue east. So we plug in three lanes, and that doesn't include the shoulder, which, if you sit there, and I've been watching the videos again in preparation for tonight, you do see the use of the shoulder to decelerate into the site driveway, decelerate into Morgan Lane, and then depending upon the people, what they want to do when they're leaving Morgan Lane, they're, most of them I see, gun it and then get into that outside lane as opposed to using the shoulder, which was, it's tapered in its striping, so it's not a full shoulder at Morgan Lane as you enter 22. So the, I'll say, the results, I would consider to be a little bit on the more conservative side, but this is the recognized methodology, God bless you, for analysis, and had DOT requested the analysis, this is what we would have given them. So it's the software that we use, but it's not perfect, and that's why we also visit the site and watch and see what happens, and it's great the way we're counting cars these days because we've got the videos to go back to. And that's what I'm saying, is when you sit there and watch over an extended period of time, you do see the gaps in traffic that let people come out of Morgan Lane or let people come out of the site driveway, as opposed to when you're a driver going through this corridor or maybe coming up Morgan Lane to turn right and you get a little frustrated. But based on everything I've seen, the level of service CD makes sense, and that's also consistent with most driveway analyses we see on 22 throughout, not just Bridgewater, but 22 is a pretty busy road.
Yeah, but, you know, traffic is kind of life and death, and to use something and to sit here and say, you know, it's a conservative analysis, but it inherently has limits in it, I mean, this is life and death. This is my 17-year-old new driver hopping on your street that you designed, that you testified here five times, or you've had five hearings. You know, at what point, you know, does a piece of software and an algorithm with, you know, I guess you dropped in your total trip on Route 22 heading west to east of 3,637, you drop it into the software, you model up the lanes, and you say, okay, this is a C, it pops out of the other end of the software. But, you know, when we're dealing with life and death, at what point does it give you pause? To Mr. Sweeney's questions, at what point, you know, it's scary going, trying to get over to 287, and I know you can't engineer out bad decisions, and I'm not asking you to do that, but when something has inherent limitations, when I see that footnote, and I thank you, I think that's incredibly honest that you put that in your report, I'm grateful for that, but at what point does a board of laymen that, you know, we have nowhere near your expertise, you know, do we say, okay, let's do this? And that's what I'm struggling with. And Mr. Kent Smith, your applicant was wonderful in redesigning this, and we've really been tough on you the last five hearings, but I think you hear us, and I know you do, that it's about safety and it's about the neighborhood, it's about the people that live on Morgan Lane. So we got one of them, we can check one box, that you have testified, and I think you've done an adequate job in saying that we're not going to have spillout to Route 22. But now how do we protect Morgan Lane and the people that are going to be accelerating onto 22 and try and cowboy it up to 287 South?
So, Mr. Chairman, that exact issue, Mr. Sweeney, you brought that up as well, is what, and again, this is a five-second conversation with the design engineer, but he gave me an immediate, oh, yeah, we could do this. Now, I can't represent to this board what it is exactly because we haven't designed it, but we hear you loud and clear. You want to eliminate, to the greatest extent possible, any traffic from this site going out to Morgan Lane.
Definitely.
That, we hear it, we're going to work on it, we hope to have a submission back to this board in short order to address that concern.
Well, and the other thing is, when you say level of service C out of a piece of software that has inherent limitations, that gives me pause. How do we make sure that this, can we model up an acceleration lane between now and the next hearing? I mean, they have algorithms for everything now.
Does it take into account someone's holding a cup of coffee? 90% of...
Sugary drink, cup of coffee.
They've got something in their hands.
There's two options.
Okay. So there's an existing condition that is a very real situation, and it's the proximity of Morgan Lane to that split. And DOT hasn't, through our submissions, seen that to be a concern. That's not to suggest that it's not, because I have seen people make that move. I am troubled by the way people are driving since COVID. I am all over 22, and I am appalled. I am passed on the right on the shoulders where three lanes are opening up in the vicinity of Chimney Rock or the overpass that just before Vosler. People are passing me in the right lane. That Chimney Rock, when they're coming down and they're merging from the left, they're blowing through. It is insanity what is going on, and I can't drive the cars, but we can certainly look at reengineering our site, we can look at the signage and so forth that your consultant has talked about. And as to the intersection configuration, I don't, right now, have an answer because that would seem like a lot of engineering, and it's something that would really be up to DOT. And so I'll stop there.
Yeah, because I think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sweeney, rest of members of the board, you know, I think we can accomplish, we can't ever do everything 100%, but we can accomplish a great, great deal of reduction of any potential traffic from this site going on Morgan Lane. You know, I've now heard a third option that we are going to be exploring. So I hear the board, I hear you loud and clear, it's our intent to, when we come back, to have an answer.
Well, Maurice, if you don't mind, I'd like to open it up to members of the public for questions, and then after that, I'll come back to you and our board professionals. So members of the public, you came out tonight, I want to make sure you can participate. We have about 20 minutes, just under 20 minutes. I see Mr. Singer approaching. Good evening, Mr. Singer. If we could just have your name and address, please, for the record.
Stephen Singer, 11 Kelly Court, Bridgewater, New Jersey. And Chairman Fuss, do I address the board or do I address the witness?
You can ask questions.
Well, it's not time to address anybody.
Yeah, yeah, it's ask questions.
Questions.
On the traffic testimony.
No statements at this point.
At the end, you can make a statement as long as you want.
That's why I asked, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
11 Kelly Court, Bridgewater, New Jersey, which I will note is one of the cross streets that comes right out of Morgan Lane, which is why I'm here, because it's, I appreciate you hearing them, and I appreciate all of the questions that you have all asked. I can't make statements now, so I'm not going to do that right now. What I heard before was that there is basically no way for them to turn left onto Morgan Lane once they're done with the Starbucks. Is that correct?
The existing driveway will remain, but it will be improved. If you're exiting towards Morgan Lane, you're only allowed to turn left to go back to 22.
Right, that's what I thought the configuration was, but the impression that I got was that you think that most people aren't going to go that way? Is that correct?
Well, we have, again, we've modeled it, but we have sent a lot of our traffic exiting back to the existing driveway on 22.
All right, I mean, so as someone that has lived there, I've seen the traffic that came off of Houlihan's, and I never came to complain about that, but when you have, you said 15 potential cars in your queue, most of whom are going to take the path of least resistance, which would be that exit right there. What I'm concerned about is the backup onto Morgan Lane that's going to happen because of the 35 to 55 seconds per car that it's going to take to turn from Morgan Lane onto Route 22. You multiply that by the 10 to 15 people, and now we're looking at a 10 to 15-minute backup at any given time on a residential road where people are trying to get off.
Right, the increase in traffic on the Morgan Lane approach to eastbound 22 is between 27 and 59 vehicles in the peak hours. So in the worst case, on the Saturday, it's about another car per minute that might be added to that movement, and again, that's the movement from Morgan Lane onto 22.
The worst case is on a Saturday? I'm more concerned about the 7:30 to 8:30 on a given weekday.
Sure, so the additional activity on the morning peak hour is 42 and the evening peak hour 27.
So you're anticipating that 42 cars per hour will add on to Morgan Lane at that point?
During the busiest morning peak hour, yeah.
Right, which, again, can create anywhere between 20 to 40 minutes worth of backup.
Well, it doesn't quite work that way, because when you sit and watch the traffic, as I testified earlier, that most of the time you see one or two cars that might be waiting, and they're waiting for that traffic in the outside lane to pass by to get into the stream. So when we look at the average delay that is calculated, it comes out to about another two to three seconds of average delay.
Okay. So you said, you know, the one to two cars that are currently making that, as Mr. Fuss mentioned, this is a residential road, so those are only residential cars that are doing that. You're anticipating adding about four times as many cars per hour to that area based on the addition of the Starbucks, but that's fine, I understand your point about that. So are you expecting that no one traveling on 22 heading toward 27 is going to see Starbucks and be like, oh, let me cross the three lanes to Starbucks?
Well, I think between, you know, we talked a little bit about GPS and so forth, I think a lot of people are looking, if they're not familiar with the corridor and what's available, then they're probably GPS-ing where to get coffee, and this isn't the only game in town. There's, you know, sites east and west, and on 28 we were just talking about, and so depending upon where they're coming from, I would think that if they're not familiar with the fact that the Starbucks is here, they're going to be looking for coffee or food, and GPS will help them get there.
The last one I have is that you mentioned that the Goddard would be comparable to Starbucks in terms of volume. Is that only for that peak hour in the morning and that peak hour in the afternoon? Because Starbucks, to me, seems to generate traffic throughout the entirety of the day.
Yep, I was speaking to the peak hour volumes that were used in the Goddard report versus the current report before the board.
So whatever traffic the Goddard would have created really would have only been during those two hours, but Starbucks would have been during the entirety of the day.
Well, and both of them would be generating driveway volumes throughout the day because the Goddard has dismissals that start midday and go throughout the day. So it's not to suggest that it would just be the two peak hours, but I would agree with you that the Starbucks overall is going to generate higher driveway volumes.
Thank you. All of your questions lesson mine greatly, so thank you all.
Thank you. Other members of the public, questions? All right, seen none, going to go back to board professionals, and you guys can, all right, Maurice grabs a microphone.
Ms. Dolan, good evening. Thank you for the testimony. I have a few questions for you. Let's start with the level of service, which you talked a lot about, but I think the board and the public is still probably not unsure as far as what makes a level of service A or B or C or D, and what does it mean, and how do you go from A to B, from B to C, and C to D? Can you please explain to the board how does it work? And keep it simple, please.
Sure. So we're talking about a grading system. It's a lot like school, with the difference being that levels of service D and E are okay, whereas you wouldn't want to get Ds and Es, well, there is no E, you're going right to F. But it's based upon, it's based upon the average delay that a vehicle experiences, a driver experiences as they wait to make a turn. So level of service A for unsignaled, which is what we're studying here, zero to 10 seconds of average delay. So some vehicles may wait a second, some may wait up at the top of that scale as 10. Level of service B, 10 to 15 seconds average delay per vehicle. Level of service C, which is what we're talking about in our study, 15 to 25 seconds of average delay. And then D, which we've got a couple of those, 25 to 35. So it's based upon the average delay, and that's a combination of the turning vehicles and, in this case, the through vehicles on Route 22 East.
Okay, thank you. So the criteria is the average delay.
Correct.
So the average delay is, for example, 30 seconds, that would put you in the D as in David category, right?
That's right.
Okay, and if it increases by 10 seconds, that would put you into an E category.
That's right, yes.
And if it goes above 50 seconds, it puts you in an And if it goes above 50 seconds, it puts you in an F category?
And that's what I said DOT will not allow for a new driveway.
Correct. Okay. So, can you talk about the queuing and give the public and the board a better idea of how many cars you expect the queue to increase by when you compare existing to proposed? Are we going to have one more car, two more cars queue, if you have that information readily available?
Sure. I can tell you that the, well, let me start with, because the concern seems to be the approach on Morgan Lane as you turn right onto 22.
Correct, yes.
So, so we talked about the, the no build to the build condition being a level of service C in the morning, and with the additional site traffic, we're only adding 2.3 seconds of delay in the morning peak hour.
Can you give us the seconds? Can you put them on the record, how many existing, how many proposed?
Okay, sure. So this is the morning peak hour, 15.7 under the no build condition, and then 18 seconds, which is an increase of 2.3 seconds during the morning peak hour. That keeps us in the level of service C range.
Okay, so no build meaning Starbucks doesn't exist, and build meaning Starbucks is open and operating?
That is correct. Okay? For the evening peak hour, 26.5 without Starbucks, which is a D. And then when we add the Starbucks traffic, we go to 29.1, which is still a D, and it's an increase of 2.6 seconds of average delay per vehicle. During the Saturday peak hour, no build, level of service B at 13.8. And then with the addition of the Starbucks traffic, it goes to 15.4, which is just over the level of service C threshold, and that's an increase of 1.6 seconds of average delay. So the queuing, while it, it may sound like another vehicle per minute is all of a sudden going to add queuing, the calculated queue results don't, don't, they don't double, for example. They're, they're staying at the one to two range.
Okay. As far as access on Morgan Lane, you have two driveways. You have a right-in, which is approximately maybe 150 feet into Morgan Lane, and then in another 200 feet, you have another driveway feeding the site that has an entrance and an exit. Why do you need two entrances on, on Morgan Lane? And can the site operate with only one? Can we close off the first one? And if not, why not?
Sure. I, I think that when we were here back in August, it was, it was very clear that there was a concern about the, the newly constructed Goddard driveway, the entrance only on 22, and that creating a spill over potentially of queuing onto the highway. So when we eliminated that, for, I'll say, ease of access to this pad portion of the overall development tract, we looked at, at that right-in only to get the Starbucks customers in a little quicker. As I had said during my direct testimony, it's an unimpeded movement. I think it can, from a capacity perspective, certainly be accommodated at the existing right-in, left-out driveway on Morgan Lane.
Okay. We talked about the split of traffic between Morgan and the driveway to the west, the right-in, right-out on 22 to the west. And I think we, you told the board a little bit about the split, but can you go over it one more time? What do you expect, the split of traffic, assuming everyone observes the sign and makes a left, which I think most people do, not everybody will, but most people will? What do you think that split would be in terms of numbers? And the reason I'm asking, so that we come to the exact number, or as much exact as possible, that is going to end up on Morgan Lane?
Okay, sure. So of the, again, for the, the modeling of the Starbucks and to load up the Morgan Lane intersection for the purposes of analysis, we routed all of the Starbucks entering traffic to turn right onto Morgan Lane and then turn right into the Starbucks pad. For the exiting, yeah, we had about 70, 75% exiting to the right-in, right-out driveway to the west on 22, in front of the, the restaurant site, with the balance, 25% exiting left onto Morgan Lane to then turn right onto 22.
And I'm assuming you based that on the trip pattern on the highway between 22 and 287, right?
And, yes, and recognizing, as I said earlier, we counted the split of eastbound traffic that continues east or goes to 287, and it's, it's roughly 50/50.
Okay. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Maurice. All right, we're going to pause here, we're going to pick it up here at our next meeting. Thank you for accommodating us with the split meeting, I know it's an inconvenience, but why don't we get with Nancy and get you another date, when you can come back?
Are we finished with this witness?
I don't think we are. I think Catherine and Bill...
Well, Mr. Chairman, because I've already noodled out with the client and the engineer, we probably will have Ms. Dolan available just to address the fact that we are making some modifications. They will have hope, positive, positive impact, but...
All right.
So we will bring her back.
Nancy, what's our next available date to continue Starbucks?
May 13th? Mr. Chairman, if you would be so kind as to announce that?
Yep.
Yep. So for members of the public, this, this hearing is now concluding for this evening. It will continue on May 13th at 7:00 PM in this room, and there will be no further notices from the applicant.
All right, we're going to take a quick break. Why don't we come back?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Oh, please.
Because if we're going to do this, I have to have Mr. Toby available, and he's going to be out of the country. Is there another date, maybe into June, or? I'm sorry, but...
No, no problem.
So don't leave yet.
Don't leave.
June 10th. Are you going to be back?
I'd like to take a few weeks.
Well, no, no, I was being... Does the 10th work? June 10th, we're checking on right now. You're available? We're all good, then, if you could re-announce for... Yes. All right, so again, for members of the public, this hearing will continue on June 10th at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notices from the, from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Just so you know, I am retiring fully on April 1st, so my partner, Mr. Chang, will be taking this application to and through.
Wow.
But I'm, I'm done.
Best to you in retirement, and thank you for all the collaboration over the years.
I actually retired April 1st last year, but I was cajoled into seeing if I could get this one across.
Whatever you choose to do, golf, grant kids, whatever, Godspeed, and...
All of the above.
Yeah. Good luck. Thank you.
And Henry, I just wanted to add, the profession will miss you, you're an excellent attorney.
All right, we're going to, it's 8:38, we're going to come back at 8:45, and we're going to continue.
Stretch my legs.[1122.83]
All right, we're going to come back in session. The time is 8:48. Nancy, if we can have a roll call, please.
Chairman Foose?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mrs. Amin?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Fresco?
Here.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Here.
Mr. Gieske?
Here.
Mr. Seacat?
Here.
Mr. Kulak?
Here.
Mr. Vesio?
Here.
Mr. Gabbin?
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Coakley, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Coakley, Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. So, we were here initially in August, and then we were here again in November. And just to kind of refresh your recollection, I'm sure it's not necessary, but in August you heard from Ms. Laura Friedman, who's the CEO of the Jewish Community Center, and Rob Michello, who is the site engineer. Mr. Michello then was succeeded in November by Eric Keller, the traffic expert who justified, I think persuasively regarding traffic concerns. Tonight, we'll present Mr. Peter Steck, the applicant's planner, who will go over the criteria for the use variances sought by this application. Just to forecast the future a little bit, although sometimes that's a dangerous task, but Mr. Michello is -- will come back at some time in the future to go over the -- how the plans have changed in several material ways from what was originally introduced back in July or June. And then after Mr. Michello testifies, Mr. Cohen for the JCC will give a summation for the -- on behalf of the JCC, and I will give a summation on behalf of the applicant. I would expect that when he returns at some future date, Mr. Michello will address the recent letter from the board engineer, Mr. Burr, concerning stormwater management. So that's what the past has been and the future. If you have no questions, I'll move forward.
I have a quick question. I watched the -- November 12th was our last meeting.
Yes, 12th.
I watched that, you know, it was an interesting hearing. Our planner had asked about distribution to the board of an Oprah that Mr. Keller had referenced in his testimony.
Right.
And I know you had provided that to the board, and I wanted to make sure that all the board members saw that. Catherine, that's where we left, we actually ended on that question. Do you have any questions pertaining that Oprah? And is there anything that you want to follow up with Mr. Coakley or Mr. Keller on?
No, I appreciate them sending me that. I actually didn't do the follow-up work to that. Bill, I don't know if you want to jump in there.
Sure.
Bill did some follow-up work on it after we received that.
Yeah, it's where we left the meeting off, and, you know, I had some questions because frankly, you know, in my opinion, I thought the Oprah was very narrow to only include that in the request, and I'm wondering what your thoughts are.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's my exact thought is, you know, after the meeting, Mr. Coakley's office was kind enough to provide the results of the Oprah, actually, what was initially requested and then the information that the police department provided. But my initial thought was exactly the same. It was the question of why was the request made that was so narrowly scoped to the subject property, and why wasn't it expanded, you know, 1,000, 2,000 feet beyond the limits of the property to get -- just to paint a clearer picture of how that corridor operates? So I had the exact same question, and I think Mr. Rashad agrees with me as well.
Okay. Your thoughts, Mr. Coakley?
Well, Mr. Keller was here. He explained why he did the Oprah that way. It was certainly the most critically adjacent stretch of roadway that applies to the site, and no one questioned him about it, actually.
He didn't have it. We didn't have the Oprah request.
No, he testified exactly about it, sir. He testified.
Oh, that's incorrect. I watched that hearing today, and he did not provide the board with that Oprah.
I read the transcript, and he testified exactly where he -- what he Oprah'd.
He testified that he -- to the Oprah, and he showed that it was an appendix to the -- that the actual documents, the police reports that they received, were an appendix to the traffic.
But the Oprah was not.
But we -- because we didn't even get the Oprah, the actual Oprah request document until after the board hearing, that was an indication that it was still an open-ended item in my eyes, and that we never really got to respond to what the actual points were. We had the police reports from what they did Oprah, but we didn't have the actual request to see what the police were responding to.
Okay. And we have that now? The board has that now?
We do.
And we're not able to question Mr. Keller because he's not here tonight?
Well, Mr. Keller has testified for three hours plus. He was testified exhaustively, and the board engineer also gave testimony to the board as well.
Yeah, that was last year, though. The board has a new engineer, so we'd like to give Maurice an opportunity from Colliers Engineering, who's now been retained by this board, to question Mr. Keller on his narrow Oprah request.
And we also have a police report that you should have, right?
Well, we don't have that police report, so that's a...
2825? You can have my copy if you want.
Other than Mr. Keller's police reports?
No, we have Bridgewater Township Sergeant Dan Hennessy.
No, your Mr. Hennessy did not bother to attach what -- that to his letter, at least not that we got.
You can have mine.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, the applicant didn't get that?
I think there's some confusion over the Oprah was for police reports. That's the report from the police, the memo, just as the other internal memos, such as Catherine's and Bill's, that were sent over to Starbucks.
So the police department's review memo?
Yes, they were sent with the other review memos.
Right. We got the memo from Sergeant...
Hennessy.
Hennessy.
But we didn't get any Oprah that he submitted or any Oprah response.
Okay. So you have no comment on Mr. Hennessy's letter?
We haven't seen it. His letter, all of those points were addressed during the testimony, the exhaustive testimony, and presumably persuasive testimony.
Mr. Hennessy's quote, "The addition of 60 units in this area will inevitably lead to an increase in traffic volumes. As it stands, the current infrastructure is already strained during peak hours."
I mean, Mr. Keller's opinion was that there was nothing in that report that needed further elucidation on it.
But if his opinion was predicated on a very narrow Oprah search, you've heard from two board professionals, and maybe we can have a third board professional, Maurice weigh in, that the Oprah maybe wasn't adequate for his three hours of testimony, and I think it was a little less than that, but...
Well, it was certainly adequate enough at the time that nobody asked any questions or suggested that he should do a greater Oprah search, so.
Because we didn't have the Oprah. I never saw that Oprah.
It was in the record. I mean, it's...
I just want to clarify that the police department's review memo included a check of motor vehicle crash data from 2020 until now, showed 23 accidents in this stretch of roadway, which is an indication that the Oprah request, because it was located at intersections, not the whole stretch of roadway, there are actually additional crash data. So I was assuming Mr. Keller was coming tonight to respond to this memo.
That was I.
To exceed the number of crashes that -- and police reports that were part of the initial traffic.
Well, what we got, of course, did not indicate what stretch of roadway was looked at by Mr. Hennessy, Sergeant Hennessy.
Okay. We'll leave that open, and the board can weigh it as they will.
Right. In any event, Mr. Keller was not available this evening, so that was another issue. So I'd like to move into evidence, two documents, R4, which is the engineer's set of plans and aerials, and R5, which is the site distance study document that Mr. Keller utilized.
Mr. Coakley, we're using A just as applicant, but A4, again, just describe what A4 is.
It's a four-page set of documents prepared by Mr. Michello's firm that has the site layout, aerial photographs, that sort of thing, four documents. It's called the engineering documents in the discussion. And A5 was the site distance study that Mr. Keller utilized. If you recall, he had a document that supported his 671-foot or more site distance.
Okay. So, sorry, but I have a A -- I'm just looking at what we already marked. So I have A5. Is this what you're referring to that Mr. Keller used?
Yes, that looks like it.
So I had that marked already as A5?
We've marked them but not moved them into evidence, and that's what...
Okay.
They've both been supported by testimony of, in one case, Mr. Michello, in the other case, Mr. Keller.
Okay, that's acceptable. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to call Mr. Peter Steck. I'm going to allow Mr. Steck to have the podium, and I will get out of the way a little bit.
So, Mr. Steck, if you would raise your right hand, please. And you know what? We haven't sworn in Mr. Rashad, since he's our new engineer, to this application. Why don't you stand as well? I'll swear both of you at the same time. Okay? You solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
And your name for the record, please?
Peter Steck, S.T.E.C.K.
Maurice Rashad, R.A.C.H.E.D.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Mr. Steck, am I being picked up here? Mr. Steck, what is your profession?
I'm a planner in New Jersey.
All right, are you licensed?
Yes, I was licensed in 1976 and still hold that license.
And do you have a master's degree in planning?
Yeah, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers.
Okay. And just what's a -- give us a thumbnail of your career, for the purpose of qualification.
In the past, I've worked for two consulting firms, Malcolm Kessler &amp; Associates, and Alvin Gershon &amp; Associates. I was the planning director for the township of Montclair for about nine and a half years. For the last, over 20 years, I've been self-employed as a community planning consultant, testified in approximately 230 municipalities in New Jersey, and been accepted as an expert planning witness in those jurisdictions, as well as in Superior Court and Tax Court.
And have you worked for, as a planner, municipalities?
Yes, I've worked for several municipalities, and more recently now, I guess my practice is split between developers, in some cases, and neighborhood groups, in other cases.
The board certainly accepts that.
But I believe I've appeared here before.
You're good. We accept you as a professional planner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Steck, what is your purpose here this evening?
My purpose is to analyze the variances that are being sought as part of this bifurcated application.
Right, and maybe we start with, if you would enumerate the variances?
Yes.
The use variances.
So, as the board is aware, we are separating the subdivision and the so-called C or bulk variances as a future issue, and right now we are seeking D variances. So, one of the variances is that the JCC, which was originally a permitted use in the zone a number of years ago, became a conditional use that didn't meet the conditions. And you can look at that as a D1 variance because it's not fully a permitted use. You could look at it as a D3 variance in that it's a conditional use that doesn't meet all the conditions. But in any event, it's a D variance because we don't have the status of outright permitted use. If we had frontage on Route 202, 206, we would meet all the conditions and would be considered a permitted use, but we don't do that. The townhouse, the age-restricted townhouse portion, clearly involves a D1 variance, a so-called Medici case, and we are also seeking a floor-area ratio variance and a density variance. So those are the D variances that are associated. That's why we're here before this board, and that's why we need five affirmative votes in order to secure approval. If we get that approval, as the board is aware, we will return with site plan subdivision and any bulk variances, C variances, as the second phase of a bifurcated application.
All right, would you say that the density and the FAR variances are resultant variances? In other words, result from the basic use variance sought?
Right. I would say the parent variance is the D1 use variance because it's an R40 zone that doesn't permit attached housing, and the standards that were cited in terms of density and FAR were intended for single-family detached houses. So we did cite them as relief that's needed, but in my view, they're simply linked with the fact that we're proposing a use that wasn't permitted in the zone, and the density and FAR standards were intended for a permitted use, detached, single-family homes.
Now, let's just address the JCC use variance, first of all. Why is the JCC entitled to a use variance, in your opinion?
So, it is, in my opinion, an inherently beneficial use. This municipality has addressed it in the past as under the category of a house of worship, and indeed, there are religious aspects to components of it. But it is a charitable institution, while there are, again, some religious services associated with it. There is daycare, there is recreational opportunities. As you know, it's a regional organization handling several counties. So, my view is that it should be judged as an inherently beneficial use that is expanding by the addition of three acres that would be incorporated into the parent campus. And as you know from the past testimony, it's not that new buildings are being proposed. We're going to use one of the dwellings that's on that three acres to be subdivided as an office. There is open space, you know, storage associated with it. So it's going to be incorporated into the campus, but without necessarily new construction. The only new construction, which is significant, as you know, that as this application evolved, we're going to have an emergency connection between the JCC campus and the proposed townhouse project, and that's mutually beneficial. That means that each development, even though, as you know, even though the RSIS would not require a second means of access from the townhouse development, to enhance the public safety and protection, we are going to have a road connecting the two campuses that will be gated but available for emergency services.
So, let me address the legal test here for this use variant.
Mr. Coakley, can you put the microphone a little closer? Thank you.
Is that a bit better? So, what is the SECA test, do you know?
So, as the board is aware, there are a number of uses that are called inherently beneficial uses, which means by their very nature, they promote the public welfare. Houses of worship are one of them, daycare centers. And so there's a, as the board is familiar, I presume, there's a four-step process. The first one is to judge the magnitude of the public benefit. Some inherently beneficial uses, like a head trauma center, are more important to the public welfare than like the storage of school buses. So the first one is, what is the public good that arises from this use? And again, by the very nature of the applicant, the Jewish Community Center of Somerset, Huntington, and Warren Counties, this is a regional facility that provides social and recreational services, tax-exempt organization. It's been treated in the past as, in the general category, of a house of worship. So the first step is, what's the magnitude of the public benefit? Number two, the board is to say, what are the negatives that arise from this expansion? Is there more traffic, more light, more noise? The third one is to say, are there reasonable conditions that you can envision that can be imposed that would lessen those negatives that arise from this expansion? And then the last stage of the SECA test is to conclude, on balance, whether the negative criteria are satisfied, given that there are public benefits that arise from this. So as I look through this, this is a major regional organization that has many social benefits. It is well-used, both for cultural reasons. It is not restricted to members of the Jewish faith. Anybody can belong to this. But it's been treated in the past under the general category of a house of worship, but it is a charitable... But it is a charitable institution and provides, in my opinion, a significant public benefit, not only to this municipality, but to a three-county region. We're expanding the campus by three acres. That would be finalized in a future subdivision. And that activity, we are not building new construction there. We're converting a house to office use. There's going to be storage there, but not many changes. So, the existing activity that occurs on the campus, while technically, we're increasing by three acres the campus area, the level of land use impacts is simply going to be dispersed a little bit into those three acres, but not intensified. So, if you stood at the driveway on this facility, essentially, you won't see any difference before and after, because we're not increasing any programming. This is just to expand and spread out the campus area. It is, it's been here a long time. Again, it was a permitted use.
Mr. Steck, why are we talking about this inherently beneficial use that's ancillary to the housing? Is the housing inherently beneficial that's being proposed? So, why are we spending so much time? I don't think there's a board member on here.
There's variances. We want to put the proof on the record that there's variance.
This board is not in the habit of denying inherently beneficial uses. We did a case in an hour recently. So, you're spending the majority of your limited time in front of this board, where you, you know, have canceled meetings in the past. We're trying to accommodate you tonight. Why wouldn't you spend your testimony on time of the primary use? If the housing's not inherently beneficial, we're not going to deny inherently beneficial use to a house of worship? It's confusing. I mean, you have limited time. You're free to use it as you wish.
Well, we appreciate the guidance. We'll move on.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so, moving on, Mr. Steck, to the variances related to the townhouse development. What are the applicable legal tests for those variances?
So, this is a D1 Medici case, because it's a use that is not permitted in the zone, which is only a single-family zone. Again, it was intended, the density would only permit, if these were single-family homes, 12 dwelling units. We're proposing 60 dwelling units. And there is an FAR issue that we exceed. And again, it was designed, your point 1.7, FAR was designed for single-family houses. You didn't want a big, single-family house in a traditional, single-family neighborhood, and that's why the FAR was there. Your ordinance also applies them to non-residential uses, which is more typical. But as I mentioned earlier, the density and the FAR were intended for single-family detached homes, and obviously, that's not what this application is about.
So, looking at the residential use, does that residential use satisfy the purposes of zoning under Section 2 of the MLUL?
In my opinion, it does. So, we're talking about the Medici decision. I have to show you, I have to demonstrate to you that there are some purposes of the municipal land use law that are advanced, that the use is particularly suited to the property, and I have to show that it meets the negative criteria under the so-called inherent, under the so-called enhanced burden of proof. So, I believe the board has a report that I produced October 11, 2024, and I listed a number of purposes. Before I get there, I just want to...
Let me just stop you for one second. Does the board have his report in front of them?
We do.
Okay. I'd like to have that marked, Mr. Oler as A6.
Sure, it's A6.
Just to lay some foundation, on the fourth page of my report, which is A6, I had a plate, Plate 4, that shows the existing land use pattern and the existing zoning. And one of my observations is that this is in a corridor, sandwiched between 287, which is a controlled-access highway, and the state highway 202, 206. And if, on the right-hand side, if you looked in the zoning in that portion of the zoning map, all you see is single-family zones. But as you can see from the color coding, the area is quite different from what you would think of as a solid, single-family area. And I depict the range of land uses that are in that existing land use diagram. And I went further than that. On the next page, I looked at the whole corridor, and what I want to emphasize is that there's a lot of different uses in this corridor. There's a mixture of some single-family areas. Now, we have a single-family area to the south and north of us, but they weren't integrated. You know, to north of us is West Foothill Road, and although that was a cul-de-sac that was extended, there was no Stub Street that was supposed to connect to our property. So, we can't go north and integrate with that neighborhood. And to the south of us are three flag lots, again, without any way to integrate our property with that area. So, our property is really oriented toward the state highway. And as the board knows, it's farmland assessed with a commercial farm stand in front and two dwelling units in the rear. Part of my analysis was to not only look at the surrounding area, and as you know, there have been a number of changes over the years, mostly at the northern end. You've had new houses of worship come in. You've had multifamily come in in the corridor. But when I address the negative criteria, I'm going to have to talk about your master plan, because I have to show that it is not, doesn't substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master plan. Master plan is different from the reexamination report, as you know. Your last master plan was done in 1990, which is a long time ago. Your 1990 master plan looked at this neighborhood that this property is in, Neighborhood C, and said, in the short term, we want it to stay single-family. So, it's true. Your master plan didn't say, put townhouses here. It said, in the short term, that this should be a single-family area. We don't want to change it.
Is that a quote? It says "short term" in our master plan?
Yes, it's in the title of the whole paragraph.
Has there been some more recent reviews of our master plan, Catherine?
There have been a number.
A number? So, we're not working off of 1990's data?
No, there's been a number of master plan reexamination reports, and then there have been a number of elements to the master plan, like a circulation element, housing element, land use element, most importantly. And I, I mean, I was going to wait till Mr. Steck finished.
But Mr. Steck is framing a 1990-dated document, but that's not the reality, it sounds like.
No, and actually, some of the documents from 2010, 2014, 2005 included recommendations that no new master plan should be conducted, you know, which is more recent than the 1990, with the 2014 master plan, including that a new master plan is not warranted at this time. Recent master plan elements of recreation, economic development, circulation have been adopted, and the township's continuing effort to address the commitment to the goals and objectives of the 1990 and 2005 master plan.
Chairman, I appreciate your vigor, but you're interrupting his testimony.
But he's giving incorrect information, that I know is incorrect, and I want to make sure the board has the proper information to adjudicate your case in the most efficient manner. And members of the public also are entitled to hear. When a witness says 1990, that's not the reality.
His master plan was in 1990, that's a fact.
Mr. Fuze, I have no problem Mr. Steck finishing the testimony, and I'll address all of this when he finishes.
Perfect, thank you.
So, the last comprehensive master plan, at least on your website, is the 1990 master plan. That was prepared, you know, a year before, and actually, for example, it, that depended upon, the last census was 1980. And I'll address this later, but in 1980, the portion of your population that was 55 and over was about 17%. In the last decennial census, 2020, that is 31%. So, marked change in the composition of your population since that time. The title on the 1990 master plan said that it was a short-term recommendation to keep the single family. Since that time, when that was adopted, the cycle for updating the master plan was six years. Now, it's 10 years, but the answer is, it's been 34 years since that comprehensive master plan was done. Your most recent reexamination report, which is not the master plan, not the test of the negative criteria, says that you need a new master plan. The 2022 reexamination report says you need a new master plan. Now, I know you're apparently working, the planning board's working on it now, but the last comprehensive master plan that specifically addressed this area is the 1990 master plan, as I reviewed it. So, in my opinion, there are several purposes of the municipal land use law. They're advanced by having this age-restricted housing. And again, while the federal law allows 20% to be non-age-restricted, the applicant has invited a condition that all of the units would be age-restricted here. So, there must be a householder that is 55 and older, and there cannot be residents that are 18 and under, school-aged children.
Let me just stop you there for one second. Mr. Coakley, in my notes, there was something in some prior testimony about the age being 62. Did you guys say that at some point, that you would age-restrict it at 62? I understand that, but there was some discussion about 62. Are you saying that the condition that you're proposing would be at 55?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it would be, it would be 55, it would be no school-aged children, period, and it would not have the 80% limitation that you have in federal law. So, it would be a true age-restricted development without any nipping on the edges.
Okay.
So, just to address also the, some of the criteria, I mentioned in my A6 report several purposes of the municipal land use law in NJSA 4055D-2, and I referenced A, G, H, I, and M, and the language is included in my report on page 5. In terms of A, in promoting the public welfare, I'll emphasize two things. Part of this project is to transfer three acres to the JCC, which is, in my opinion, an inherently beneficial use. So, that part of the application clearly benefits the JCC. As I noted, the last time there was a comprehensive master plan, there was really not a lot of attention paid to age-restricted housing. It wasn't really popular, so popular at that time. But because of the population shift, in my opinion, it does promote the public welfare by providing this type of housing, which clearly is a greater portion of the population in Bridgewater than has historically been the case.
Mr. Steck, did you do a study of the population in Bridgewater to determine what percentage of the population is, would be eligible for this type of housing?
Yes. So, based on the latest census, there's a total population of 46,079, and 55 and over is 14,803. So, that's 32.1% of the population, compared with, in 1980, it was only 17.
All right, so, I'll show you a bar chart. Did you prepare that?
I did.
And what does that show?
That shows just what I said, although it breaks it down into the smaller age categories, but it documents the percentage that I indicated.
All right, we've marked this as A7. We'd like to distribute it to the board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just describe what A7 is again.
It's a Bridgewater Township, New Jersey, population by age group, bar chart.
And where did you get that?
This is from the U.S. Census website, and it's...
It's of what date?
Let me just verify. This is the, the five-year estimate from 2022.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
While you're on this page, page number five, somewhere you say that multifamily densities...
Mrs. Amin, could you talk into the microphone? Could you use the microphone?
Were recommended between 5 and 10 units per acre, that's what it's...
I'm sorry, I can't hear your question.
Mr. Chair, I've asked Mrs. Amin to use the microphone. That's the best I can do.
Okay. See, in this, on this page five...
Yes.
Somewhere down at the bottom, you say the subject, the multifamily densities were recommended to range between 5 and 10 units per acre, right? On this page, page five?
That's a different exhibit, so I'm happy to answer questions about that, but we...
Does that apply to this location?
Adam, I'm going to pass out the exhibit he's talking about now.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer your question later, but we probably should get this exhibit distributed on the population first.
Let's hand that out, and let's make sure members of the public can get a copy as well.
Give them all to me, I'll go left and right here.
This page five is the...
Chris, if you could just make sure a member's up. Never mind, thank you.
So, let me guess, continue through some public purposes.
Well, why don't you just finish up talking about the...
Okay.
What are the principles showing of the...
The answer is that I would expect, because of the aging of the population in Bridgewater, that there would be a need and a demand for age-restricted housing, because it's such, it's almost a third of the population is eligible for this type of housing. And again, it's dramatically different from the characteristics of your population when the last full comprehensive master plan was done, and specifically talked about this area. I recognize there have been amendments in terms of like warehouses and other things, but that 1990 document was your last comprehensive master plan, as I looked at your website.
Did the 1990 master plan indicate anything about multifamily housing built, being constructed along busy roadways, or to that effect?
It did. It said that as part of its policy, that multifamily housing should be located on the busier streets, the state highways. And again, this property happens to be on 202, 206. So, there was, it didn't say specifically on this property, but it said at a planning principle, multifamily housing, and it considered the density range as 5 to 10 units an acre in that document. It said it's a good... It said it's a good planning policy to locate that on the busier highways, such as 202 and 206 was referenced.
And what's the density for this proposed townhouse project?
It's 5.03 units an acre. So we're at, according to the master plan, we're at the low end of the density.
All right. You want to finish up on the, how the project meets the purposes of zoning?
Right. Purpose G talks about providing sufficient space in an appropriate location, and as I indicated, there's a wide variety of uses in this corridor. We do have access to a state highway. There's been extensive traffic testimony about that. We are isolated from the residential uses. If the subdivision to the north would have had stubs, streets that stopped at our property, I probably wouldn't be here tonight, because that showed an intent to kind of integrate us, this single family zone with existing development, but that's not possible because of the way the abutting land uses have been designed. It's also an appropriate location, partly because we're in a position to help JC expand their campus, but we're in a position of having a joint connection for public safety. And I think that relates to purpose H, which talks about the design of transportation routes that promote the free flow of traffic, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's a public safety issue there that's promoted. Purpose I talks about encouraging senior citizen community housing construction. Under the municipal land use law, that's 62 and over. They define seniors as 62 and over. This is 55 and over. But in my experience, many of these occupants will be 62 and over as they age in place. And it's again, a major part of the prop, your population that's 62 and over. M talks about encouraging the coordination of various public and private procedures to lessen the cost of development and efficient use of land. Again, this is a good location. It happens to be, happens to abut a major regional recreational facility. This is a convenient area, being on a state highway. It doesn't interrupt other local residential streets. And I believe because of the range of land uses here and the fact that we can position these houses in a way that preserves the environmental sensitive portions of the site, that it is an efficient use of land. Again, there's a wide variety of uses in the area, and Route 202, 206, again, is designed, intended for major, major activities in terms of traffic.
Excuse me, Mr. Steck. What were your, what was the last sentence about preserving environmental, blah, 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 blah?
I was saying that, that as shown on the conceptual plan, we are respecting the wetlands and the riparian areas. Those are cut off. We're not intruding on those. We're only proposing the townhouses and the properties, the portion of the property that is very buildable.
Aren't you going to go in and pretty much clear cut the property where these townhouses are going to go up?
We're going to remove the trees.
How many?
Where the townhouses are going, but in terms of.
How many?
I don't know that.
I do. 576, according to your documents. That's how you're going to preserve the environmental status of this property?
We're preserving the areas that are recognized, at least in state law, as needing preservation in terms of the wetlands in the, in the stream corridor. But there will be trees removed.
A couple, yeah.
I want to, in my opinion, it is particularly suited, again, because it's isolated from the abutting residential areas. We happen to, because of our location, be able to assist the JCC in expanding their campus and because of, again, the whole array of land uses that characterize this corridor. And again, there are commercial uses nearby at the corner. There's a landscaping, gardening business, veterinarian across the street. This is not, if you looked at the zoning ordinance, you'd say it's a solid, single-family area. That's not the case. I want to.
Is that all demonstrated on plate, plate six of your report?
Yes, that's, that shows the character of some of the larger properties in the area on the corridor.
Are they both, are they business properties?
There are office buildings, there's retail hair salons, there are dog grooming places, there are major corporate campuses. There's a whole range of, a wide range of land uses that characterize this corridor, as well as significantly sized religious institutions that are some of the more recent developments in the corridor. In terms of the negative criteria, we are at the low end of multifamily density. We're 5.03 dwelling units per acre, and you have many zones that go up to 30, multifamily, 35 units an acre, 16 units an acre. We are at the low end of what your ordinance and master plan calls for.
Where are those located, higher density?
In some, in your multifamily zones. You have 10 units an acre, eight units an acre.
Are they, are they in proximity to this project?
No.
Thank you.
There is a benefit, in my opinion, to having age restricted housing, and some of the reasons are obvious, that you don't have school age children, which tends to be, you know, the biggest hit on the budget. But also, the ITE shows that the traffic generation per unit is substantially less than housing that's not age restricted. That's in Mr. Keller's report. Also statistically, although there's not a lot of data available of this, the peak parking demand is less. And again, it makes sense to you. These are smaller households because there are no children there, and a lot of traffic nowadays is associated with having kids, traveling to and from activities, et cetera, et cetera. The, again, I think in terms of the negative criteria, we do, again, we have a fairly detailed plan in front of you that's a concept plan, but as you know, it's fairly highly engineered. So we can demonstrate that we can meet the required setbacks of the units. Now, there is a unit in back, you know, by the three acre piece. That's internal to the project. But in terms of the housing that's either north or south of us, we comply with the setback requirements, and I think we can demonstrate that by virtue of the level of detail of the site plan.
Mr. Steck, are you about finished, or do you have?
Maybe I should just recast and summarize.
Yeah, that would be.
Okay. So apparently, the, it's, the burden of proof is on the applicant, and in my opinion, we meet the CECA standard for the JCC. And I think I've talked about the details of that, and it's certainly under the four-step CECA standard. In terms of the townhouse development, in my opinion, there are several purposes of the municipal land use law that are advanced, that it is particularly suited because of its location and its ability to benefit the JCC. I do believe that we satisfy the negative criteria because of the, and again, we're not at the final site plan stage yet. That potentially is another stage. But because of the location of this property, the fact that we're at the low end of the density, the fact that we do comply with RSIS in terms of the road system, and on top of that, we're going to have a mutually beneficial connection to JCC for emergency purposes. And because you're doing a new master plan, but because of the age of your last comprehensive master plan, in my factor that can be considered, and my conclusion is that not only is this particularly suited to the property, but it can be approved without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Steck. That's all.
All right, board questions?
Under the circumstances, can we have the board professionals comment first before the board questions? Do you mind that?
Sure, I don't mind at all.
I think just because of the issue, unless somebody objects to that.
Yeah, no problem.
Sure. I have no problem with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steck. I have a quick question about, I'll focus first on the 1990 master plan, because that seems to be the focus of your testimony and what you gleaned from the master plan. Did you have a chance to review the statement of objectives in the 1990 master plan?
I did, when I looked at it.
Is there any statement of objective related to providing affordable housing for the township?
I don't remem, if you.
Mr. Chairman, I object to that question.
Why?
To do with the granting or not granting of a use variance.
I just have, I have a question. I just have, I'm getting somewhere if you allow me to.
I mean, again, just be aware that this, that Mr. Mott's already put in her report that this is a matter up to council.
I actually only included that if a payment in lieu is, is what this board approves as part of the application, that then the council would then determine or approve that decision essentially, because that's.
Let's just call a quick timeout, Rich. Why don't you put on the record what the issue is?
Just on the payment in lieu issue, my opinion that this board doesn't have jurisdiction to determine that a payment in lieu would be appropriate. I think if there's an approval, there would be a condition that the applicant would have to go to the town council to get an agreement to make it a payment in lieu or the units to be onsite. All right.
Totally.
Agreed?
Agreed totally.
Okay.
And that's obviously part and parcel of the nature of this application. We are complying with your ordinance that does require a component, which is either onsite or a payment in lieu.
So our planner has a question on that. I think it's applicable, especially since you just agreed to the condition.
We've always agreed to that condition. I suggested that.
First I've heard of it. Catherine, sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. Well, I'll move on from that. We can get, we can get back to the affordable housing stuff at the end. The 1990 master plan, you've captured the, the recommendation of the, the master plan specifically for the land use plan element within the 1990 master plan as no master plan change proposed, retain existing low-density residential zoning as a short-term proposal. Correct?
Yes.
Are there any other categories that show up in that master plan related to the topic
Related to which area?
To the, to this, to the subject area.
Again, this was, this was, I, in my judgment, it's appropriate to look at the more specific regulations in a plan rather than the townwide goals. And this was neighborhood C that was specifically commented upon in the, the matrix in the plan.
You hadn't, in your report, you actually hadn't previously looked at that. I had raised that on, in my report, and I only asked that because you've couched it as a short-term proposal, but the master plan, which I don't think everyone has in front of them, has categories for each policy. So there's a policy it brings up to a topic area, a short-term proposal related to that, a long-term proposal category, an evaluation, and then implementation. So I think it's a mischaracterization to call it a short-term goal, but rather how they address that policy.
It was termed a short-term proposal. That's where it is in the, in the chart.
Is there a long-term proposal for it?
There's, I don't recall of one that was specific to this neighborhood.
Is there an evaluation in that?
I don't recall the specific wording, but I tend.
It's blank. It's blank. I'll give you, I'll give you a spoiler there. It's blank. So there are no long-term proposals.
Let me just repeat.
I would appreciate if the questioner did not constantly interrupt the witness.
Well, he was, he said he didn't remember the wording, and it was blank.
Well, you'd never give him a chance to answer, so it's hard to.
I'll repeat that, and when I review a master plan, you know, a lot of people kind of look to the townwide categories, and that, and you do have policies that say where there's multifamily, it ought to be, you know, on a state highway. But it's my practice to look at the more specifics, and that neighborhood C specifically showed this property, and that's why I, I referenced the fact that there was a short-term proposal here. So that tells me that, that things could change, and one would think that after 34 years, a lot may have changed.
Okay, so we'll move, we'll move on from the 1990 master plan, because that's a really good segue. Did you review, I know you mentioned that the other master plan reexamination reports talked about warehouses and things of that nature. Did you have a chance to review any of the master plan, not only reexamination reports, but land use element amendments that were done since 1990?
I looked at everything on your website. If there's something not on the website, I didn't look at it, but those other plan elements talked about Route 22. There wasn't one that I saw that specifically addressed this neighborhood.
So, I mean.
And, and just to make sure it's clear, the fact that there's a reexamination report, that's only tangentially relevant in terms of the negative criteria, because the negative criteria have to do with the master plan itself rather than the reexamination report.
Did you happen to read the 2005 master plan amendment and reexamination report?
At one time I did.
There is an actual reference to the Route 202, 206 corridor and senior citizen housing. Did you happen to remember what was included?
I don't remember, but I looked at all the documents on the website.
So the, in the, in the 2005 master plan reexamination report and amendment, it included that in the 1996 master plan reexamination report, this is on page two, it was recommended that senior citizen developments, including nursing homes, assisted living facilities, continuing care, retirement communities, congregant care facilities be permitted in residential zones when lots have frontage on 202, Route 202, 206, or Route 28. The development of senior citizen facilities along this corridor has been the subject of a master plan reexamination report adopted in, in spring of 2004. As a result of a shift in policy, the master plan reexamination report eliminated these uses. So there was an actual, it might not have been specific to this property, but it's definitely specific.
But it didn't talk about age restricted housing. It was more assisted living and nursing home?
Senior citizen development included.
Well, this, again, this is 55 and over. It's not technically 62 and over.
On page nine of that same report, it is a reexamination report, so it reexamines the 1996 reexamination report and specifically limit the development, any additional high-density multifamily housing developments unless such are dedicated for senior citizen housing.
But the, the reexamination report is not the master plan. It's a different section of the municipal land use law.
Under the extent to which there have been significant changes in assumptions of policies, which I think is important for this board to see how policies were viewed, it included that Bridgewater has several nursing homes within its borders and describes them, also has numerous senior citizen projects, 62 years and older, including Arbor Glen, Center Bridge One, Center Bridge Two, Autumn Woods, Avalon, Brandywine, Woodmont One, Four Seasons, and several senior group homes, including yada, yada.
And one on Chimney Rock we recently approved.
One on Chimney Rock. So, so it says that this is, this is great, that they're able to age in place. So I just wanted to make it noted that there was an acknowledgement of the same use throughout the township. So because we, you had mentioned that the reexamination reports were limited to other categories, I do think that there's pertinent information in those reports that should be gleaned and should be talked about because they were interim to 1990 and present day. You've also mentioned that there are other multifamily zones that allow higher densities within the township, correct? And I believe the chairman asked.
Yes.
I think that's a good, that's a good point for the board to realize that this township has contemplated zoning, has contemplated different, where appropriate density should go through the master plan recommendations, has implemented that over. go through the master plan recommendations, has implemented that over time, whether they be senior citizen developments or they be high-density multifamily. I appreciate the, the census data chart that shows the age of population 55 and older in Bridgewater. And I, my questions related to this are, one, are there other senior developments that exist in Bridgewater that, that address the population that you've brought the census data out on?
There are existing age-restricted communities, but my point is that almost one-third of the population in Bridgewater is eligible. There's been a significant expansion, and in my opinion, that's why this applicant is, feels that there is a demand as well as a need to provide this type of housing because there's been such a dramatic increase in this cohort of the population.
Do you, do you have a, the change in population percentage from the, from, this is ACS data, I guess, from a 10-year, from the ACS, the 2012 ACS, or 2010 census? Do you have a change in age, in 55 and older population?
For what census?
Let's say the 2010, let's say the, the last--
I, I looked at the, the, I looked at the, the latest statistics is the five-year estimate from the community survey, and I told you that, I think I already said what that year was. And again, I went back to the last comprehensive master plan, which didn't have the 1990 data available at the time. So they relied, that plan started being crafted in, in 1988, and the only census data then presumably was the 1980 census. And again, that's simply why I went to the 1980 census where only 17% of the population was 55 and over.
Did you look at the changes intermittently from the 1990 to 2000?
No, I didn't, because I didn't think it was helpful.
So even though the township has built senior citizen housing and age-restricted and assisted living housing over the last 40 years, you didn't think it was important to look at the change in the gaps over those decades?
No, I don't think that's, I think what's relevant is what it is today, and clearly it's not that every 55 and over person has to be an age-restricted community, but there's been a massive increase in the number, and the, my client has, has made a marketing judgment, there is a significant demand for this type of housing.
Okay, do you happen to, did you do an analysis of the number of units, the age of the units, the number of communities that are age-restricted or assisted living that serve the population that you've brought the data out on?
No.
Do you think that would be helpful to ascertain, rather than just the portion of the population that we have that's, that's aging?
I suppose if I'm requested, I can do it, but I would suspect that, again, there's not a one-to-one relationship. Not everyone over age 55 wants to be an age-restricted community, but I would suspect that the, that, that portion of the population greatly exceeds the number of units that are built that are age-restricted now in Bridgewater.
Okay, thank you. I believe that, that the data on its own doesn't serve, doesn't serve the argument of saying that there is a growing need unless we look at the actual number of units we have. If we had none, I'd say, you know, absolutely, but the, over time, these have been, and the master plan has acknowledged that there have been a number of them, and that's why they were--
But the, but the master plan doesn't quantify it, and again, my, the reason I'm talking about that is there's been a dramatic shift in the population based on what the crafters of the 1990 master plan had in mind.
Yes, and I, and my opinion, I'm sorry, I should make it more clear, my opinion is that the master plan has acknowledged that since 1980 or since 1990, a number of these developments have been developed to address that, and that's why the policy shift was to, to not promote that or encourage that anymore because, because they were meeting that demand. So that's my opinion. The, the final topic I want, I want to address is that your report had noted that age-restricted housing generates lower land use impacts. I think you touched upon it maybe as far as traffic. Is there, is there any data to support that?
Yes. It's in the, Keller's report documents the, I'll tell you what the numbers are if you're, if you recall. This, in, in ITE, the latest document, category 220 is multifamily housing low-rise. The, for 60 units, the average daily total was 413 trips, and for category 252, which is senior adult housing attached, so townhouses, same 60 units, the average daily traffic was 216. So it's roughly half in terms of the traffic generation. The, the fifth edition of ITE in terms of parking, peak parking generation, there's not a lot of data, but it has the same ratio. The, the peak parking demand is, you know, maybe only 60% of what it would be if it was, it didn't have an age restriction. And again, the obvious one is that it's, they, they tend to be ratables rather than deficits on the municipal budget because there are no school-aged children.
Okay, thank you very much for recapping that for me. Unless the board has any questions or wants any clarification or anything, I'd be happy to answer those questions, but I have nothing further for this witness.
All right, thank you very much, Catherine. Let's finish up with our other board professionals. I'd like to get members of the public on the record that came out. Like, we have a good number of people here, and then we'll talk about our next meeting. So Bill and Maurice, whoever's ready.
I have just a couple of quick ones, Mr. Chairman, thank you. For, for Mr. Steck here, so I think after hearing all your testimony, you concluded that the variances could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, correct?
Yes. And again, recognizing this is a bifurcated application, and that if the D-variants is approved, we have to come back again with a site plan and address the more specific issues. It might change the plan, we don't know.
Understood. Earlier tonight in Mr. Coakley's introduction, we heard, however, that the site engineer will return at some point in the future, as I understand, to discuss subsequent or future plan revisions, some of which may include addressing my comments related to stormwater management. I think we've also heard ongoing concerns about traffic. Traffic impacts the level of service of the driveway and that corridor, history of, of traffic accidents in that corridor, a newer memo from the, the police traffic safety division. We've also heard questions about the lack of amenities being proposed on the current plan. You've heard--
Is there a question for Mr. Steck?
There is.
Sounds like he's getting one.
You've heard concerns about the 500-and-some trees that are going to be removed. There were prior concerns about lack of landscape buffers. We've had discussion about an emergency access driveway, which I think was mentioned by Mr. Coakley at the prior hearing, but we haven't been presented with that plan that I recall. We've heard concerns about steep slope disturbance, DEP potential impacts that would require permits. So I'm just curious, and I may not have touched on, on everything. We heard your testimony about the FAR variance, which I think you're proposing as part of this project three times what's allowed by the ordinance?
Yes, were this a single, were this single-family detached homes? Yes.
Correct. And, and if this was single-family, you're, I think, over two and a half times what's allowed with the lot coverage or impervious coverage. So I'm just curious, you know, in my mind, as, as I run through some of the list of concerns that the board and the board's professionals have put on the record previously, how you could conclude that these variances could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Well, a twofold answer. Number one, the plans that you have in front of you are more than just conceptual plans. They've been fairly detailed from an engineering point of view, and that gives me confidence that when the final site plan and subdivision is proposed, there won't be substantial changes. That level of detail, I think, allows the board to make a judgment on the bifurcated application. And as you may or may not be aware, we're not home free. When we show you the detailed, if, if the detailed engineering site plan and any modifications that might be done, you still have a handle on the negative criteria, but I'm telling, my opinion is, what is before the board this evening allows me to make that conclusion.
Mr. Steck, did you disagree with anything Mr. Burr just said in terms of negative criteria? Because he rattled off on a long list. Do you disagree with anything that he said?
He, I, he had a list. I, I don't think he opined that we didn't meet the negative criteria.
Would you like him to read it again?
He asked, he asked me whether, given that, if I would, you know, still maintain my judgment, and the answer is I do.
Okay, he, he's a professional. He's an engineer, and he asked you, do you feel that the, the, the criteria can be met given all these certain circumstances?
And the answer is yes.
Okay, do you disagree with any of the points he just put on the record?
He, well, he--
I want to make sure that you heard them, because they were fast, and there was a lot of them.
I'll stipulate, we heard him.
Thank you. Sometimes, sometimes in the transcript--
The materiality of what he said is not, not accepted.
Is that your opinion as well, Mr. Steck?
That's a legal opinion. The answer is I heard what he said, and in my opinion, I have enough information that I can render a planning opinion on a bifurcated application.
So you don't disagree with anything Mr. Burr just said?
Pardon?
You don't disagree with anything that Mr. Burr just said?
You're, you're distorting what he just testified to. Why do that?
I don't know if that's a compliment from the master distorter, but nonetheless, you know, Mr. Burr gave you a list, and you're not disagreeing with it.
It's not for me to agree or disagree. I'm, I'm telling you that I heard the list and that because of the high level of detail that is presented, I can render, in my opinion, that as a planner, that this application meets the statutory criteria.
All right, Mr. Burr, please continue.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, in terms of questions. I, I raise those points because they have been brought up previously, both written and verbally, and I just frankly find it a little surprising that we're concluding that these issues frankly aren't an issue--
Don't exist.
--without substantial, more substantial engineering haven't been completed--
That's why--
--or testimony provided to check those off the list.
It's why there's a disconnection, and the distortion comment goes to the fact that, okay, these, this is your time to refute all of these things Mr. Burr just said.
These are engineering, his are engineering comments, I'm not the engineer.
But they're negative prongs to your testimony.
But the, the answer is, the municipal land use law allows bifurcation. The applicant has gone, in my opinion, a great distance in providing many more details than would normally be required on a bifurcated--
Is there a chance that 576 trees won't be removed on the second leg of the bifurcation?
The answer is, can the--
Is that more material than having housing for seniors that need it?
Well, our planner just testified, we've been building these like crazy.
The population has been going, senior population's been going up by crazy. That's the only thing that--
And that's why they sit unsold on Chimney Rock Road, all eight of them, that we just approved for over four years. Four years, all unsold. Now, I can't speak of one sold today, so maybe I shouldn't put that into testimony, but there's for-sale sign on eight lots on those senior houses.
Obviously, this applicant believes he can market these. He's marketed them all over New Jersey.
And I wish him the utmost in success. But still, going back to Mr. Burr putting all the negative prongs, you have a planner that basically is just ignoring it and asking the board to ignore it.
I don't think it's appropriate for--
Fair, fair enough. I respect that, and I'm not going to argue this. So Maurice, do you have any questions for us, sir? You've got a--
I'm sorry. I'm not close to talking in--
Let us know when you're ready.
I thought I was talking in.
All right. Sorry, Maurice.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. There was no traffic testimony tonight, so I am at a disadvantage not having heard any traffic testimony or additional answers to the questions that were raised in prior hearings. So at this point, I would have to say I don't have any comments or questions.
All right, thank you very much, sir. I'd like to open this up to members of the public. I know that the board has questions, but the hour is late. We typically stop at 10 o'clock on the nose. We're going to make accommodations. There's a number of people here, and I want to make sure if you have questions now is the time to come up and ask the planner on his testimony, Mr. Steck.
Can we have your name for the record, please?
Lisa Ferrara.
And spell your last name, please?
F-E-R-R-A-R-A.
Okay, and it's questions only. There'll be a time for statements later.
Okay. Is there anything that will prevent these units from turn, not becoming, like someday not being 55 and up?
No, well, deed restricted these units.
So they'll always be?
They'll be deed restricted, and you would have to go to court and try to get it removed. It's permanent, and, and that means that anyone that buys a unit is notified in the deed that it's 55 and over.
And only one person, though, has to be 55?
That's the law, yes.
Okay, so you could have a 320 or--
Yeah, you just, you can't, we are going beyond the law, saying, the law is that the, a householder has to be 55 and over, but we're also saying that applies to all of the units, and we're also saying that there are no school-aged children that reside here.
Okay, but you have to just, everyone else just has to be over 18, is that right?
Yes, you could have a, let's say, a divorced 56-year-old mother with a 25-year-old son.
That's my question, okay. And then the, the volumes you quoted about cars, you said there was like 200--
Yes.
That was based on senior living, though, not, not 55?
That, that was, that was senior living, although I'm not sure that the ITE uses the municipal land use law standard of 62 and over. They might, because that's like social security, so that number might be slightly modified, but it's very clear in my mind that the traffic generated per unit is a lot lower. Because you don't have kids to--
But for senior living, is it the same restrictions where you could have 18 and over, but just 62 and up has to live there? Or is there different rules for senior living?
In my, in many cases, someone that, let's say, buys a unit that's 55 and over, and they like it there, they're going to age in places, they say. So they'll be 62, et cetera, et cetera. But there are, because people are living older, like me, I would expect that a good share of this, of the first-time buyers here would be over 62.
Yeah, my question was just about the number of people that are allowed to live there under 62.
That would be, again, no school-aged children, and the health code would limit the number of people. So, so you could have, you know, four people between, you know, 19 and 25, and let's say a parent who's over 55.
Okay. Another question, you just mentioned that the seniors need homes, but I thought you guys didn't have any numbers in, as far as the number of senior living, or 55 and up living. How do you know that there's not enough homes?
The, well, the applicant does this for a living. He does a lot of these communities, and he's made, or it's, because it's a corporation, it has made the judgment that there is a strong market for these types of units.
But you don't know how many there are?
I'm, I'm not the market person, I don't know.
Okay. And then you mentioned that, was it 576 trees will be cut down?
I didn't mention that, but I think one of the board members--
It was actually 560.
60, okay. Do you know how many total there are?
No.
Is that everything?
It's in, it's in the records because there, it was, it's part of the submission requirements. And again, we've gone a lot further than just a concept plan. They've, they've done a lot of engineering on this, a lot of surveying.
Are you cutting trees on the wetlands?
You can't do that.
Okay. What portion of the 15, do you have like a map of where the wetlands are?
There, it's on the site plan. They show where the wetlands, because it's, the state has already certified the limits of the wetlands.
Yeah, and that's not really the planner's testimony. That, sounds like the engineer will be back at the next meeting. You can ask him that, though.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions?
They answered over, they asked over, but it's my job.
All right. Well, I think that, Mr. Coakley, this is our chance to get out of here at 10:10.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. Come on down.
It's kind of a repeat of the-
If we can just get your name and address.
I'm sorry. Rob Esposito, 738 West Foothill. So it's, I'm kind of repeating the same question about if these are being sold, it's being sold to over 55, or it's 55 or 62?
Well, it's 55 and over for the head of households.
So is there, and I know you said they'd have to go through some legal proceedings to get that changed, but has that ever happened in Bridgewater, where some development has been pitched to be sold to only over 55, and then for whatever reason, it does not?
I'm not aware of that being relaxed.
It would be really difficult to change that.
They're going to deed restrict it. That's a challenge for them to do. Rich?
Yeah. It would be really difficult to change that once it's in place.
So no loopholes? Like, that's never, never?
I'm not aware of any that where it's ever been changed.
Okay.
After it's been built and deed restricted.
So, we have these documents.
Okay.
Not these documents.
And then similar question, and I know it's, it's already been brought up, but the need for these, is there any study, like any tests or surveys that could be done to, to see if we actually need these? And from what I just, I heard from Mr. Chairman, that we have these and they're not being sold. So it seems obvious to me that that's, it's already been done, but-
One has to look at the nature of, of the product that's being proposed here. These are kind of high-end, three-bedroom units. And so, you know, these are likely to be people that, let's say, have other homes in Florida, in our judgment. That's the market that he, he thinks he's addressing with these units.
Is that comparable, is that comparable to the ones on Chimney Rock, or?
I'm not familiar with the price points. Again-
So how can you make that statement that these are different, when they could very well be the same?
Well, because it's rare to have age-restricted housing with three bedrooms. This is, this, these are bigger units than, and I, I would suspect are going to be higher price points, simply because of their size.
Okay. I, I would like to see data. I guess I'm getting into a statement now. It's not a question, but I-
I believe that you would like to see data.
Yes.
I guess the question is, are you going to produce any market studies to establish that there's a need for senior housing in Bridgewater?
I'm not the, I'm not a market expert. So the answer is, I've done enough research that I think, from a planning point of view, supports my opinion.
Mr. Esposito, if you wanted to do a quick look-up and use your statement at the end of the meetings to put that on the record, by all means, you could do that.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask about like, like looking into facts, like anything that's been said on the record.
We love facts.
If, if I find anything, I put that on record in a future-
Yeah, I'll give you as much time as you want at the end of the meeting. You can speak for or against this case, and you can put facts, as long as you can document where they're from, by all means, we would love to hear your comments.
Thank you. And in another meeting, right, in the future?
Yeah, we're going to get to it tonight, where the next meeting is. You never know when these are going to wrap up. But we'll let you know, and we'll make sure we put it on the website, hopefully a couple days before. And you can look up, my last name is Fouse. You're welcome to email me, and, you know, I can let you know. Nancy's also great. She keeps us all in line.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Franco, I thought I saw you in the back row. Good evening.
And your name for the record, please?
Kathy Franco. So a couple of questions. You said that, you brought up the census of people over 65 years old.
I quoted statistics of 55 and over.
55 and older, okay. Did you do anything in relationship to the income of those individuals, 55 and older?
No.
And did you look at 65 and older?
Yes.
And how was that different? What percentage of the population was over 65? Or over 75? Or over 85?
I'll, so from 55 to 59, it's 3,578 or 7.76 percent of the population. 60 to 64 is 2,993 or 6.5 percent. 65 to 69, 2,341, 5.08 percent of the population. 70 to 74, 1,731, or 3.76 percent of the total population. 75 to 79, 1,605, 3.48 percent. 80 to 84, 1,213, 2.63. 85 and over, I guess we don't care about older people.
No, I do. I do.
1,342 or 2.91 percent of the population.
Mr. Steck, would you just, your postscript on, say, what, what would those percentages as to?
As to the total 30?
That was the 2022 five-year estimate from the U.S. Census Bureau American Community Survey.
And you didn't look at the incomes of those age groups?
I didn't, I didn't address the incomes.
Okay. All right. And I think you said you're not necessarily aware of what senior living communities have been built since the 1990 full, full master plan.
I've looked at the zoning, and I've looked, I actually, I, in the housing that's near this corridor, I compared a 1995 aerial with the 2020 aerial. So I know that, like, the Four Seasons that are there. I've doc, I'm aware of the ones that have been built in the corridor. I have not examined the other ones that are outside of this corridor.
So you're not aware of the CCRC, what used to be Arbor Glen, it's now being run by Life Care Services?
Well, I, I know them only through the zoning. There are zonings that are specifically for age-restricted, typically at a, a higher density than we're proposing.
Oh, okay. And the assisted, all the assisted living communities that have built-
Well, this is not a different-
No, no, I understand that, but generally assisted living caters to a senior population.
Typically, yes.
Yes. You know, and even long-term care facilities, which may have added beds to their census.
Typically, unless someone's injured and rehab, they're a senior citizen.
Oh, okay. I just want to be sure that, you know, we're taking that all into consideration when we're talking about the number of people over, you know, over certain age, and where they may be residing. And also what the income is of this population, because as Mr. Coakley said, these may be at a higher price point because they're larger units. So as we're designing for seniors, and this probably is outside of your bailiwick, because you're a planner, you know, is it, I guess I should hold it, because I don't necessarily think that two-story units are appropriate for seniors. But also, are you aware of the fact that in Bridgewater, there was an age-restricted community that did change and became non-age-restricted because it was unable to rent or sell those units?
I'm not aware of that. I know at one time, and maybe it was, I don't know, 20 years ago, there was a short time where a project that had started under construction, you know, could got a, get a second bite. But I'm unaware of any community where the age restriction was dropped.
Okay.
That was probably under a different law that allowed you to do it at the time, because of the whole-
Yeah, it was a special legislation-
Yeah.
-the collapse of the time.
And it was a short time window when you could do that.
And it didn't apply to everybody. I think you had to have your project started but not finished, something like that.
Okay. And then just one question from your background and experience is, how often do you work with age-restricted communities or senior living communities as far as in your planning of, in your planning role?
The last one I did was in Clifton. It was a independent living next to an assisted living.
Okay. So would that account for 10%, 20%, 5% of your practice, or?
I, I don't specialize in that.
Okay. Okay. And I don't know that you, I think you touched on a little bit about how much traffic comes in and out because of the age restriction. But with age restriction, there may be less traffic from the resident. But is anybody looking at the increased traffic from deliveries, from Amazon, from meal preparation places, from, from housekeepers, from caregivers, from those individuals?
My understanding is, when the Institute of Traffic Engineers counts traffic, they count all the vehicles that come in and out.
Yeah. But Mr. Steck, just to clarify, you're not a traffic engineer?
Okay. No, no, and I wasn't sure. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for your answers.
Thank you, Ms. Franco. Thank you. All right. I think what, you want to go real quick? All right. Come on up.
Dawn Marinelli. So these units could be three bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And only one person has to be 55 and older?
Correct.
So you could have 75 percent, if you have four people living there, 75% of the people would be under 55. There'd be a lot more cars, a lot more traffic.
Well, there could be more people, but the statistics show that there would not be more traffic than a non-age-restricted community.
How could that be? If 75?
Because there aren't, there aren't kids to shuttle around.
If there is someone, kids who are 19, 20, 21, 25, they go out all the time, they come in all the time, there's a lot more traffic. And you could have one person over 55 living there.
In, in an individual instance, in one unit, you could be right, but statistically, there is less traffic and less parking demand.
I don't want to go over. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Gaskin, you had a question?
Yeah. The question, I guess, pertains to some of what I was hearing here as well. If you're saying that 30% of the population is aging at that 55 and older, and that's part of the-
32-point-
32, and that's part of the positive criteria, because we have an aging population, doesn't it, isn't it important to understand how many of those 32% could actually afford these homes? So we actually know what, what it is?
These are going to be, I believe, higher price point units that the applicant thinks there's a market for.
So that number 30, that 32% isn't really 32%?
It's not subsidized housing.
Right. Just wanted to make sure I understood what the actual percentage was and all the factors that were in there. Because it seems like it's not actually 32%.
I'm not a market person, but I'm aware that the applicant has done enough-
No, that's fine. I just, you're using the 32% number. If I understand, were you using that to say there are 32% of the population in Bridgewater would be eligible?
They would be eligible because of the age, at the age.
At the age, but that's not the only quo, so-
Talking about incomes.
Right. So I was just trying to understand how many, what percentage of the population would actually be eligible for it?
I don't know the answer.
Okay. So that 32 is just people that were 55, period?
Yep. It's, you got to have, got to be 55 and over to live here.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. We're going to, this is 25 minutes past our bedtime here, so we're going to call the meeting. I apologize, but I think Mr. Coakley can make arrangements for Mr. Steck to come back. We can finish some questions at our next hearing. Nancy, could you provide us with a date, next available date for 8/21, to pick up where they left off tonight?
May 13th is available.
May 13th, Mr. Coakley.
Mr. Chair, on behalf of the Justice Department-
Hi.
My understanding is, in communications with the attached land administrator, there were two dates discussed in April, one of which I thought was April 7, if I'm not mistaken? I have to look at my calendar. Just bear with me. And April 22?
April 8 is Paul Miller and Visions and Pathways. We have two applications that evening.
The reason I ask, Mr. Chair, is I will be out of town for a certain period of time, and we were trying to ensure that the hearings were done in a manner that could be prepared.
Mr. Cohen, we want you here, and you're obviously part and parcel to the application. But I will say that there's been cancellations in the last minute. Nancy's assembled packets. We've had people here, ready. We've had members of the public here, and there's been a cancellation within 24 hours. You know, at a certain point, we're trying to accommodate everybody. It's incredibly challenging process.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm not looking at the calendar. I'm certainly looking to-
But you, but you have canceled things in the past.
I haven't canceled any.
Well, we've had scheduled hearings with packets in our hands, walking in the door, and this hearing didn't happen.
Not in my instance.
Okay. Well, whoever was behind it, for better or worse, it happens. It's part of the business.
No, it's-
But, but it sounds like your April meetings are not available. One is an inherently beneficial foster and orphans case.
I am available on April 22. I am available April, I am available on April 8. I am away from April 29 to May 15.
Okay. So what's available?
We're going into June at that point, because May 8 is Paul Miller, Visions and Pathways. I'm sorry, April 8. April 22 is Rockland Self-Storage, plus one residential was added probably since I had spoken to Mr. Coakley's associate a couple weeks ago. So 6/10 is-
6/10 is the primary.
Yeah, is the primary, so.
No, no, no. 6/10 is not available. It's a primary date. It's a Tuesday. There'll be machines in this room.
5/27 is Belly Holdings, which was adjourned from tonight.
Nancy, this, pardon my stupidity, but what date is available?
Do you want to try and put them on 5/27? We'll stack the cases, and we'll do tonight. We'll do split hearing.
Is Belly the only one on the 27th?
Belly's the only one on the 27th, yeah.
I am available on 5/27.
Okay. All right, Rich.
Well, take that date.
Okay, you're good with that date?
Yep.
Okay. So for members, for, okay, for members of the public, this meeting's being adjourned now. It will continue on May 27 at 7:00 p.m. in this room. There'll be no further notices from the applicant.
Thank you, members of the board.
All right. And our next meeting, 7:00 p.m., two weeks from tonight. Who are we hearing, Rich?
Good question. I don't know what I do with my list.
Nancy, who do we have in two weeks?
Turmuck Oil.
Okay.
And Bridgewater Storage.
Great.